On the meetings in order, the first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. And before we get, before down that road, we need to amend the agenda. We had our special meeting on December fourth. We agreed to a special meeting on December fourth. Thanks for the leave to amend the agenda since our calendar is public. So if you have a motion to approve the agenda with the amendment to have a December fourth special meeting.
We have to separate that, Jeff, and let's separate that.
Second. The move to second, one favor, you gave by second line.
Aye.
That was approved, well, thanks Brian. Motion Gary. Move on to the public comment, the state board's agenda is full and they place limits on public comment based on the number of members of the public who intend to speak. Again, each speaker five minutes or three minutes if there are a large number of speakers. At the end of the year, a lot of time, I'll ask you to conclude and the board will move on to the next speaker. The department will now respond in public comment aside from requesting clarification. The department may place a topic raised in public comment on future agenda. Topic on public comment that is not related to agenda item on today's agenda will not be addressed at today's meeting. We have Margaret Lefton here, Margaret, you're up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for the opportunity to be in a place other than the Grindsville, we can see what's going on in school. And today, we have the Urban Education Network, since we are Council of Us, which is one of the charter founding members of the UDN. I just thought I would welcome you to see what's going on here. And also mention about executive order ten, comments about the process. We'll take this to some administrative rules under the view, I know the T D staff has been heavily tasked to go through and look at the Iowa code, the administrative rules, are there anything, is there anything in there that could be relieved? So that schools have less bureaucracy and more opportunity and flexibility. So we truly appreciate the intent of that. As a staff person that was also tasked with helping schools implement some pretty hefty administrative or legislative changes this year, the summer has been busy. So in these twenty-four that are on your agenda today, if I went through those, every rule was rescinded and replaced with new language. And if instead the process had a tracking changes view that told us, this is what it used to say. These are the things that are changed, it would be so much for the public and people who are paying attention to line out exactly what the changes are. And then I think you'd probably have a good feedback comment for Google. So that would just make it easier, I don't know if it's easier for you to see it that way too, but I would think so. So just in hopes of improving the process and transparency, we would like that suggestion. Thanks for your work.
Thank you, Margaret. Any other public comment?
You're joining us through Zoom, you can use the raise your hand feature. You're joining us through phone, you can press star nine. I do have one person, Cynthia Knight.
Cynthia Knight, okay.
Hi, I am Cynthia Knight with Choice Charter School. And April twenty twenty-two was a month that will forever live with great promise to Iowa's youth. The day you, the State Board of Education in Iowa granted permission for Choice Charter School. We told you then, we wanted to be as transparent as you wanted us to be. We have complied with every request from the Department of Education. We have provided reports, student information, enrollment data, and financials on time and what was requested. This has been much more than what public schools are required to share. During this time, we have not received any direct feedback from these reports. However, there have been public discussions by the department to the state board that we were not complying. We have complied with the D E request for transparency. Neither of the two full reports were shared with the state board. However, I did share both reports with the state board president because transparency and integrity are important to me. This has been a huge learning experience for both Choice Charter School and the Department of Ed. With new and innovative ways, Choice Charter School didn't fit into the way a typical school runs. After all, that's what a charter school is not supposed to be, typical. I would have liked to have had the opportunity to show you throughout the year what we were doing. But I was told I could not get on your agenda, and if you wanted to talk to me, you would invite me. The invitation never came. Nor did the Department of Ed include Choice Charter School when they spoke about you, spoke to you about our school. I do have hope. I have hope that this year will be better. Better clarity in what is expected, better clarity in the rules, regulations, laws, and statutes that govern charter schools, and a greater collaboration between Choice Charter School and the Department of Ed and other charter schools that are coming to Iowa on what works and what doesn't work. I will leave you with one last quote by Pete Rupert, quote, "A critical step toward achieving your dreams is envisioning the kind of future you want," end quote. I envision a future where all students are learning, earning, and flourishing. And that is what Choice Charter School is doing for the over hundred and sixty families and students that it serves. The students, the staff, the parents, and I thank you for your continued support. And your annual report that is due October first to you, according to our contract, will be mailed to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you Cynthia. Is there any other public comment?
There's anybody else who would like to speak for the board, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. If you're on the phone, you can press star nine. All right, seeing nobody, we can move forward.
All right, we'll conclude both comments and move on to the director's report.
Good morning, it has been another great and busy beginning of a school year. And as you know, the start of each school year brings new opportunities, lots of work together to support all students in meeting high expectations so that they can realize an incredible potential. I'd like to start by thanking educators for their tireless work to get ready to serve their students. Thank you to families for being engaged in your children's education all year round. And thank you students for being ready to work hard and to enjoy learning. And of course, thank you members of the board for supporting teachers, families, and students in these endeavors. My favorite thing about the start of a school year is to, is the opportunity to join students and teachers in the classroom and see their great work firsthand. So I'm very excited today that we are here at the Andy Nelson Early Learning Center. And want to thank Superintendent Moreau for hosting us and excited to be in classrooms later today. I had the opportunity to help world welcome the Des Moines Public School students and teachers back with Superintendent Ian Roberts and his leadership team, hearing that visit, we had the opportunity to tour King Elementary School, where I saw students deploying, or teachers deploying data-driven instruction and interventions and students who were enthusiastic and engaged in their learning. We also looked at M P S Central Campus where we met with incredible student ambassadors who worked at a dozen different school districts and showcased their knowledge and their passion for education and maintenance, aquarium scientists, marine biology, healthcare, and so much more. And at D M P S Central Campus and across Iowa, these incredible opportunities to earn industry-recognized credential while in high school are made possible through strong partnerships between educators and of course, industry. So we're excited to see that. And I also joined Superintendent John Cool and I E S B B I Chief Academic Officer Jonathan Carley in the I E S B B I Dear Fifteen and welcoming their educators and staff to a new school year. And it was again, great to see so many passionate teachers in the room and to have the opportunity to share our shared department vision, priorities, and our attitude for their dedication to student success. Last week, I also attended the Northwest Iowa A G A Summit and then speaking where we shared important updates or vision and our priorities. But we also had a really critical conversation about the recent I S A S, I S A S results, including student achievement trends since twenty nineteen and achievement gaps amongst certain student groups over time in this past academic year. And I look forward to joining superintendents across Iowa at these meetings throughout the fall and winter. I then had the opportunity to join President Terry Morel in touring Western Iowa Tech U V College where we met with students who were in electrical and plumbing and machine maintenance programs and saw how the college was preparing students for careers in high-demand fields and helping and supported strong tower pipeline for local employers. I especially enjoyed talking with an educator who was a retired professional who said that he really valued and loved the opportunity to give back to his community and to the profession that given him his livelihood and that had helped support a great life, family. So, so wonderful to learn more from him and others. And I cannot forget the amazing Iowa state there. We had the opportunity to meet with some of the great ethic baby students who showed off their livestock, a refurbished nineteen forty-seven tractor, and their knowledge of astronomy, horticulture, livestock, and so much more. We had the opportunity also to join Dem Day, which was a, which was full of hands-on learning experiences for students and visiting with the STEM exhibitors. We actually had a blue origin proof capsule there and we had the opportunity to learn about submarines, hydroponics, robotics, transportation, and again, much, much more. We also joined Governor Reynolds in congratulating the twenty twenty-three STEM Teacher Award recipients at a recognition ceremony. The awards, which are sponsored by Kim and Industries, recognized teachers from the state's six different STEM regions for integrating high-quality STEM programs in their classrooms. And then finally, we had the opportunity to join the Governor Branstad and recognizing the Governor Terry D Branstad Iowa State Fair Scholarship Awards for this year. And then next week, I'm looking forward to joining Boone and Southeast School Districts with colleagues from Iowa Workforce Development to see the different ways that districts are providing all students with access to high-quality work-based learning opportunities in those districts in the process state. Secondly, I would also like to share some information about staff who have recently been recognized for their important work. So Brenda Winnealer, who's a part of the Bureau for Nutrition and Health Sciences, was recently named the Iowa Restaurant Association's Forty Women to Watch in the Hospitality Industry for her work in supporting school nutrition programs across the state, which we're very proud of. And Brenda is a former culinary educator who leads staff trainings for schools to help them incorporate freshly made meals into their menus. She serves on the Advisory Board for the Culinary Institute of Child Nutrition. And she's also reported a series of culinary skills videos to support school nutrition departments. So excited to celebrate her excellent profession. Also, Dr. Kim Breanik was recently appointed to the U S Department of Education's Regional Advisor for the BRAC for the Midwest Region, which will help advise U S Ed in the educational needs of the Midwest region and how U S Ed can most effectively support state departments and school districts in addressing those needs. And then thirdly, there are several approaching application and nomination deadlines that we would like the board and the public to be aware of and elevate. On September twenty-ninth, that is the deadline for nominations for the twenty twenty-four U S Presidential Scholars Program. The program recognizes up to one hundred and sixty-one high school seniors from across the country for their accomplishment in academics, the arts, and career technical education. We look forward to Iowa being well-represented as always in that important program. The department is also currently accepting grant applications for the twenty-three twenty-four Career Academy Incentive Fund, which is now in its seventh round of grants. Applications must be submitted by November sixteenth and they must include collaboration with at least one of a school district and one community college. Priority consideration goes to applicants with partnerships between multiple community colleges or multiple school districts. And then just a few notes about the important results of this program. There are now twenty-eight regional centers across Iowa with eight regional academies that are set to open within the next few years. In the past five years, over twenty-six thousand high school students from a hundred and fifty-eight school districts have accessed more than two hundred and thirty-eight career academy programs delivered through a regional center. And that number of course continues to grow. And then finally, the Mount Patience, the tenth year of the Iowa STEM Teacher Award, which we got to help celebrate at the Iowa State Fair, are now being accepted through October tenth. Again, that award recognizes one whole time licensed pre-K teacher for each of the state's six STEM regions. And these are just great opportunities to recognize dedicated teachers across Iowa. And we're really excited as always to review the submissions and to help celebrate those incredible teachers. And then fourth and finally, just a couple notes on updates for your upcoming training and support opportunities for schools coming out of the department. As we've talked about, the department has partnered with SAS's E-Boss. And we are now hosting six in-person regional trainings the first couple weeks of October. These are going to be half-day entry-level workshops and they'll be held in all nine superintendent's regions. They're tailored to meet the needs of district and school administrators, school leadership team, and professional learning communities. And as you know, the E-Boss reports really provide data to help school districts make informed decisions about areas related to school performance and student supports, educator supports, and school improvement planning. So attendees of this workshop are going to learn how to navigate the web application, but also how to interpret and use the data and the reporting results to support students and teaching in the classroom. So we're excited to provide that opportunity. And then finally, the first meeting of the S S Support Network was held at the department last week. The network is made up of representatives from each of the superintendent's regions and A G As as well as staff from the bureaus of school improvement and learner strategy support group in the department of education. And its purpose is to support the implementation and sustainability of high-quality instructional materials and evidence-based practices in Iowa schools and across Iowa school districts. And the team is going to start its site visits for the ethically dignified native comprehensive schools for the week of September eighteen. So we're excited to keep up that for this coming school year. So thank you for the opportunity to share a little more about the great work occurring across Iowa schools supported by the Department of Education. And that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you. We have, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have the minutes from the August third meeting and then a number of rules.
Are you looking for a motion?
I'm looking for a motion, yes. The move to consent agenda as presented.
Second.
There's a second, John.
I had a question about K and M.
Just second time. Okay. All right. You're just by. All right. It's been moved in second, now is there any discussion, okay Brian.
I had a question about K and M. A was my question had to do with the termination for cause language on page five of that proposed rule sixty-five point eight-two. It seemed like that program, the award could be terminated partially or wholly when the Department of Education determines that the person who received, the recipient hasn't complied. And that a notice would be sent with the reasons why it was terminated and the award would be shut down. I was just wondering if there should be some kind of notice of a default first so they'd have a chance to cure that before before the award was terminated. The language, the status quo language, so given that additional suggestion, that would be something that the department would consider and adopt and be bound on the purpose of either through public comment or adopted by the purpose of this second order ten review is to this is just to give the notice, I just to give the notice again and clear up the dead weight and that's a status quo rule. But status quo rules can all yeah, there are other instances where notices given and person gets a chance to cure it. So I just wanted to raise that as a question, I guess I can make a comment, right? Yes, okay. And then the other one was M. Then that seemed like, I guess I was just more interested in some context here. And then my only comment, and I'll make that in the process, I guess, is there's references to race or national origin, and then there's ethnic origin kind of used interchangeably. I know there's old versus new. It just seemed like that maybe those should be I think the rule, the new rule seems to want to say national all the time, not ethnic. But ethnic is throughout the back part of the rule, so I'll, I'll respect the process and just make it. But I was wondering, is there, maybe Thomas, you could just give the elevator speech version of this one.
The chapter ninety-five.
Yeah.
Each state agency is required to have a equal employment opportunity for their action plan. The statute specific to the Department of Education also includes school districts, community colleges, and this is required chapter, required batch of rules. One of the changes that was made was striking us in unconstitutional language. Other than that, it's status quo, but words change, terminology changes over time. So I've got that in my post, but I consider a cut out in the file. So they need to harmonize their language. But it's a, it's a all-government-wide rule requirement under co-chapter eleven.
Thank you.
Just to point, clarification is that all the rules, as far as consent agenda concerns, to get notice of a public hearing.
Correct.
Correct. As a result of public hearing, then we'll see these same, excuse me, rules come back to us in final form.
Yes. Additively, if ever.
Okay. Right. Any other comments? The questions regarding the consent agenda items? Very admirable. Who was in favor of approving the consent agenda and gave that sign aye?
Aye.
Aye.
That was a follow, same sign. Consent agenda is approved. On to rules, chapter sixteen, preschool.
All right, we're, just want to take it more away before we dive into some of the more media notice. Executive Order ten requires a striking place for each chapter. So executive order ten, the department is not able to present to the board a redlined version because executive order ten requires a bookie look place. That being said, it would be optional for the department to aid and that is feasible for the department to keep the public comment this morning about providing side by side. That side by side will not be anything that you act on as a board or anything that the administrative rules review committee acts on. It will be an interpreter tool, a help or a cliff's notes, but it would not be an action higher. So the comment was well taken, the rules team probably be able to find some kind of, you either do a side by side or a redline reading, understanding that that's not the objective argument. That's the, the teachers additionally cliff's notes. With that being said, just want to talk also about why the editorial choice of the rules, the consent agenda versus rules as an individual action higher. The rules on the consent agenda are of the sixty-three chapters largely uncontroversial compared to others that we've heard. So to sort of accelerate the time, give you more time to hear some of the important agenda items later on your agenda, including this word, this beautiful building. That's why the department editorially selected these rules for consent agenda consideration. So background of the public comment and why things sort of aren't the way they did. The preschool rule, since you don't have the side by side yet, the preschool rules things out that way. There are, there were that way than two requirements. First of all, a lot of duplication in the statutory range. So a lot of duplication, in fact, with C, which is the preschool chapter in the rules. That adds zero value to takes up paper. And second, there are some obsolete language in the current chapter regarding taking the preschool program to scale. I was here when the preschool program was taken to scale. And there was an application process and a non-organization process in all two districts now participating. So there's no need for rules because of those two districts decide to come on board. There's contingency plans to make that, make that happen. Every other, it's been, it's been a minute since this process opened. Everybody who, every district that has wanted to come on board has. So the big changes in this rule, proposed rule from current state to this numbers is cleaning out some obsolete language about applications, removing statutory language that merely duplicates rather than expands. And taking out some restrictive terms that do not add that. And an example of this comes from this chapter. The rule, the current rule states that each preschool program shall and there's like fourteen requirements below that. And each of those eleven requirements, it says shall. You don't need a shall in each sub-rule if you have a shall in the, in the heading or a shall in the main part of the rule. So those sub-rules become, those shalls become belts and suspenders. Unnecessary editorial overkill. So that is one of the reasons why the shalls in this chapter are reduced without changing any of the protections for preschoolers. Dr. Kimberly Malati, who actually knows the program, is very answering the questions that you have, but there is no substantive change to preschool program standards, no substantive change to services. It just makes the rules more acceptable than user regulation in that way.
What, what's an aspirational rule?
Well, we should, like, there's a lot of, you know, it is the goal that every child will have perfect cursive handwriting, like, that's, that's unenforceable. And there's a lot of, we hope to. And like, hopes, hope tos are hard to monitor.
Yes.
And hope tos are hard to measure. And worrying about hope to sometimes takes away from being used.
And those are the lead.
Yes, the hope tos, because they, they were never enforceable to begin with. Hope tos belong in position statements, technical assistance documents, that practice, and they don't belong in something that's regulated.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments about chapter sixteen?
I move that we give notice of intent to amend chapter sixteen as presented.
And move by Brian, is there a second? Second, I wrote, made further discussion. There are none, those in favor, you gave by sign aye?
Aye.
Motion's carried, chapter sixteen will be given notice. Next rule is chapter eighteen, please.
This is one of the
This is one of the bullshit I enjoyed having when I was in litigation practice, legal service. These rule involves fee waivers for individuals blowing up. No public policy change, no changes for, and we either require us to have a fee policy or a waiver policy that either adds or detracts what are or are not allowed with fees, that it does take away some of the the restricted terms that do not add value. It takes away, you know, a which is, means purpose statement. It doesn't add any value and it also takes away a, an effective date rule that is a, was a legacy rule from when this statute, the underlying statute was adopted. I was a college freshman, I believe, when this rule came into effect. I have not been a college freshman in a while. There was no need for an effective date for this rule. So that's why the effective date rule was, the department was striking that. Seeing as I used to do school B litigation, I am the subject matter expert on this rules. Do you have any questions for me about rules? But I'm the, I'm answering them there.
Just a comment that we had much I guess complaints on fees in recent years?
Not in recent years. It typically involves student activity funds and the finance team does a, a good job of explaining what the student activity fund can impact for. The finance team has this portion of the rule, the litigation that I was called in and my colleagues with the first and second generation. Fee waivers, the typically the direct charges education. But we have not seen any state board appeals. I think since the, on this issue, since the early, I think the last one I directed was in the early downs. So not a lot of, it's sort of baked into the process now.
A lot of a lot of fees or if you weren't on free reduced lunch application.
Correct. Free introduced lunch application. Quality care. The, the four eligibility criteria, at least in the rules, those have not changed.
Yeah, I didn't know if there'd be any issues during COVID years when everybody had pre-mills.
Community eligibility, they, they work the process out. If, if I wasn't if I didn't be dealing, there was a separate, separate application process for fee waivers in community eligibility, school buildings, the finance team did their job helping helping with that when the, the building was submitted to community eligibility.
If someone applies for a fee waiver, am I reading it correctly in, on page four that you can apply anytime, but it's the following year when the waiver takes effect? An application can be received at any time, but may only be renewed at the beginning of a year?
If I apply in a year, my renewal will be at the start of the next school year. So if I find in October, my renewal for my fee waiver is August, not next October. So I can apply anytime, but the cycle starts at the start of the school year.
It just seems like there could be a mid-year hardship or something. I don't know. I'll make a comment later.
And typically of this, there is a situation where a child goes into foster care mid-year, they're immediately eligible, their fees are waived. But they were instead on day zero.
So there's other duals.
That's the way that they customarily.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And just reiterate, there's a financial hardship they can apply at any time. But the renewal, so they can apply anytime, Brian, and receive free reduced fees.
Correct.
And can it be granted immediately?
Yeah.
All right. So it's just a renewal of it would be the following.
Yeah. So I don't have to wait until October. I find October, granted in October, I don't have to wait till October. It's something that the school needs to know about, August twenty-third, August twenty-fifth, whenever the school starts.
All right.
So even if I qualify free reduced lunch, I still have to apply to have fees waived. Is that correct? So we have to do this twice?
A lot of schools have an application, but free reduced lunch purposes. A lot of schools are hesitant to use that eligibility automatically when it's based on USDA regulations. So that's why there's two, there, there's in some districts, two applications and some districts has a combined application. But it can be school, some schools are hesitant to make it automatic for here running against, running up against USDA language.
But the rule talks about DOE providing the application form, not the school district.
Yes, we provided an application. And that's again, something that perhaps you take up in public comment. There's a sample application. Since this program is so well, so well established, maybe the need doesn't need to provide an application anymore. That was the legacy language from the nineteen-nineties, two thousands.
I move we give notice of intent to amend chapter eighteen as presented.
Second. And move by Brian, second by Mike. Further discussion. Harry, now, those in favor, can you get my saying aye? Those opposed, same sign? Harry. Chapters nineteen and sixty-eight charter schools.
So we have two, we have two chapters on charter schools, one under the place law. One of the legally down chapter two fifty-sixteen. The current chapter sixty-eight contains a whole bunch of rules that will never apply because the only two charters that are able to operate in the chapter sixty-eight are the two that were approved under the, under the legacy statute. There's no need for an app, for an application. There's no need for a renewal on innovation zones schools, because there will never be an innovation zone school under the legacy charter law. So those, that language was stripped out. A lot of common requirements between the two statutes. So it makes administrative sense for the department to not have two rules chapters on charters. And to consolidate chapters nineteen and sixty-eight into chapter, a new chapter nineteen with divisions. The other thing that this rule does, again, makes no substantive changes. But it removes language that was a drag drop from the statute. That was a particular emphasis from Governor Reynolds and her executive order. And that makes these rules more shelf stable. During the last legislative session, there were multiple additional requirements added to the charter school statute. If the state board does nothing but reiterate what is in the statute, every time the statute changes, the rules have to change. That is takes up a lot of your work, takes up a lot of your time going over policy decisions that have been made on legislation. So if there is that is one of the reasons why this chapter is significantly shorter, because it incorporates by set, by reference the statutory requirements and adding only instances where the department, the board determine like additional data points are required, such as the conditions for learning as part of the accountability framework. No substantive changes between current nineteen and sixty-eight other than removing statutory language that's a drag and draw. And eliminating obsolete rules from the legacy charter school statute. Which nobody will ever need anymore. And removing restricted language that does not add value. My colleague Janet Boyer, who actually knows and helps charter schools follow these two rule chapters. She is here to answer any questions that I cannot, that the one or elevator speeches, those, they don't change.
Yeah. Any other comments? Very nice.
I, I noticed in this one that there's a lot of things put on the state board of education to develop non-renewal standards, revocation standards. Here you'll be helping us do that.
Yes, and that is current, that is status quo language from current chapter nineteen.
And these, and decisions that are made by this, at this table are not appealable. Is that status quo too?
Yes. So are decisions non-renewed or decision in a contract.
They can keep coming back. But they don't, that's not a, it doesn't go beyond this table.
There's no seventeen degrees.
So by, let me.
That's also status quo.
Well, limiting the legislative language, there's a lot of references to that, right?
Correct.
So if I was in interested in operating or starting a charter school, I would need this and the Iowa code to get.
Yes. One of the responses from the governor's office, the, and my job likes asked at the outset of executive order ten, there's nothing that would permit it, sort of a, a bench book or a user's guide that consolidates the two as a non-renewed back. Here's the rules and then here's a manual for end users, a manual for parents, charter school authorized users, charter school administrators. But the purpose is to move that out of the Iowa administrative code and into more P A documents, fact sheets and user records.
So like a playbook or?
Yes, here's
Here's like so loud.
Here's rule, here's statute consolidated. So the for ease of use of the end user, that will there's no added value to having stuff repeated in the, there's no legal added value to having stuff repeated in the administrative code. Which is why the suggestion from the governor's office has been to create these user manuals, consolidating total removal.
Just, just so I understand, once the charter is a granted group, we, we are monitoring that program, yeah, each, each year. We don't approve it each year, or do we approve? Five years, it's a five.
But if there's issues, it can kind of.
Okay.
I, I correct if I'm wrong, Thomas, to give them a vote.
Yeah, you can revoke it anytime, give it, under the process. The, the board had to build under these rules and under the, and under the current rules. So the annual report, the, the annual report on charters, that status quo, the revocation process, status quo, five-year renewal process, status quo.
And what would trigger triggers? What, what, this was, this was wrong. I mean, do you constantly give feedback yearly, monthly?
My, I think the code of, I think.
Would instantly, you'd instantly be?
Yeah. Yeah, parent, parent concerns, you know, would be something that we would look at. That's, I don't know if I'm covering everything, but there are part ones, there are part ones that are covered.
And how quickly would you bring that to us? You, you're monitoring that for us now. How often would you say, I, I'm concerned about this issue? Would you bring that to us or is it definitely violated?
Definitely. I can joke with several of us. When, when it became apparent that I was, I had to correct if I'm wrong here, but I would assume the next meeting that.
I hear that. We would hear that issue.
This, this, this is actually an example of what I was talking about before, where we actually would give a notice and say what the problem was and give them a chance to fix it. Which I think is always fair if, if you're going to terminate something. That's on pages eight and nine.
Yeah.
Your report's on.
The charter, you get suit, but only not suit involved, so, you know. If, if that's the company you have to, okay, if they have to go, it sounds like, oh, you want to give enough notice. But they, they could find another one.
Yeah, it uses the word reasonable. That's like a lawyer's annuity.
Yeah. Ten lawyers.
Elect those ambivalence terms.
And then ambivalence statutory.
Right, right.
I would say the start of the charters, um, they do a lot of charters named in line if they have funding.
Breach the law, breach the contract, fiscal mismanagement, and stuff like that, what it looks like.
Correct. Differences of opinion. Yeah.
So it's nothing for, for this me, but I'm assuming down the road will have a, a report on how our charter schools are doing. I know that all the public schools are, are giving a rating every year. Somewhere down the road, maybe in the future, distant future, and it'd be interesting to see a rating of charter schools. All right. So any other questions regarding this item? This is chapters nineteen and sixty-eight charter schools.
I would live really notice of intent to amend chapter nineteen and the sending chapter sixty-eight.
To move by Cassandra. Second by Maren, any further discussion? Harry, now, all the, my saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Just Harry. Next chapter is thirty-three, homes.
This rule removes, this vote will make you removes the, some statutory tasks, including the definition of homeless, the definition of homeless is already in Iowa code. No need to repeat it legally. Again, this goes back to the prior discussion about user guides, bench books, practice manuals. There's no need for it in the administrative code. There, there was also some like scope and sequence. When revising the order to make the flow for end users, the decision tree a little bit cleaner and removed the current rule thirty-three point one, which is, it is the policy of the state of Iowa. The statute said the policy, the rule doesn't need to be stated what the statute tells, what policy the statute says. Other than that, no standard changes, no changes for the rights of students who are homeless, no changes, the responsibilities of your districts that serve and support them. My colleague Julian Datsin, your programs is remote and can be promoted to panels if there are any questions that I can answer.
Just a question in general. What is the status of our homeless students in Iowa? Is it maintaining the same number relatively, is it increasing or decreasing as far as the reported number of homeless students?
I don't know. Somebody can find out to you, but intuitively, I think it's sort of stabilized after, after the pandemic. But before the end of the meeting, either the homeless coordinator, your chief Datsin, or Ryan, by that day, that report's important. Um, either the homeless coordinator, your chief dots, and you're arriving by that day that your report's been worked.
What's a school of origin if you arrived here and haven't? Been in a school. You know, I think it's talking about the schools of origin is where you last permanently were. In a school or preschool, what if what if you just show up? From Wisconsin or Illinois and you haven't.
Well, Wisconsin would be.
Oh, so it'd be the other state.
My candy manager likes.
Okay, alright, that that answers my question.
So uh, the team would need to decide if it's in the best condition, the child maintained in the Wisconsin program or come to uh, to the V.
Good.
And on the on all four borders, there are quite, there are students who. Uh, are homeless in Iowa that continue to attend out of state. And 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 vice versa, based on the determination of what is the best thing.
Was a homeless child have to have a guardian? The main decision for that time?
There are uh, provisions for unaccompanied homeless students if they are away from their parent area. There are uh, safety valves and there's no uh, decision maker available. The safety valves are baked into federal law. There are additional safety valves if unaccompanied homeless student is a child with disability. So there there's no. There's no requirement that a child. Who's homeless have a very. Or that very for for an adult to make decisions for them. Um, federal statute sets out who can be decided in the absence of parent. Uh. For honor for special education students when I need to go in my candy.
Are we talking about dozens of kids? I know somebody asked the question about how many. I would appreciate the information that's good as possible. We're talking about dozens of kids or we're talking about hundreds of kids?
For what?
For homeless.
So I think I could be around and just pulled up something, this is she 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 runs the Google better than me. The past, the year for the most recent data, school year twenty-one, 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 six thousand fifty-seven students. A decrease of about one thousand two hundred from two school years ago. So um, sort of compounded expectations of homelessness that sort of got out during the pandemic. It's um, actually ticked down between twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen and school year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. So six thousand students. Between six and eight thousand. Uh, over time. If you.
That was just one important point about is nationally, we saw concerns about the ability to school districts training the five homeless students. Through the pandemic, so that could be really driving factor in production.
Yeah, I was actually interested to read that about, I think it's our page four, the first. Thirty-three point two, one district will locate and identify children, homeless children, youth within the district, whether or not they are enrolled. So that's the role of the district. Schools to actually so mind these students, which I. That to me was surprising, um, but I mean.
School law, focus notices around town.
Right.
Longer match. Congress meal sites. Uh, community action agencies. Uh, so. Homeless coordinators in each district, they probably wear another hat to do a great job.
They're also required to report to the local school board, ensure the score is. Any further comments or discussions regarding this step? Move that we get to the third three.
Second.
Move my mic and second by Cindy. Further discussion. Hearing none, those are the favorite emotion, indicating my saying on.
Aye.
Go to the post, same sign. What is carried? That would be hit the nine.
This rule chapter again contains a large amount of. The status quo of chapter ten, in a large amount of drag and drop from. Code section is two fifty-seven, forty-two and follow those, that language incorporated by reference. There. Is acceptable. For a paragraph that's being deleted because that paragraph about. Stat qualifications is more perfectly addressed by the Board of Examiners than the Department of Education. Uh, you know, this this is one of the um, benefits of executive order ten, making sure each agency swims in its lane. Uh, that rule, that that paragraph sounded in uh, stat qualifications. Order that examiners territory rather than the state board's territory. Uh, and there were some editorial changes to sort of make the decision-making flow. A little bit easier for um. Deciders in different terms. Whether whether maybe teachers or those places aside from that, uh, deletion of the rule that sort of strays into. Be double in territory, there's no standard change.
I'll move that we give notice of intent to amend chapter fifty-nine as presented.
I'll send it.
You buy Brian, second by Cassandra. Any of this recommended. Hey, discussion. Hearing none, those in favor of giving those for chapter fifty-nine, I get my saying on.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Homeless carrier. Alright. Next one is chapter sixty, English learners.
You've seen this rule chapter quite frequently, most recently because of the change in language from limited English proficient English learner. Um, this, so this chapter is relatively fresh. Uh, still, the department identified some circumstances where um. The the rulemaking is required, however, there was some language about um. Some obsolete language, language that duplicated uh, the sort of the funding mechanism. The funding mechanism is set out in statute, there's no need to be set in rules, and the funding mechanism. Really shouldn't be driving how instructional decisions are made. One clarification, this is a substantive change. The statute for the underlying statute requires non uh. To serve English learners. The rule that's not, the status quo rule does not. Uh, there's some tension there. Uh, the source of protection for English learners. Uh, which exists in is national origin. Which covers non-public schools under federal civil rights law as well as the Iowa Civil Rights Act. So what is the proper? And non-burgess expectation on non-public school students to provide services to English learners. Without regard to whatever services that receive from public schools, without regard to whatever uh, funds. Have been generated either through the state funding model or through territory. Um, the proposal is to adopt. Um, or import a standard for non-public schools to serve children with disabilities. And that is minor adjustment. So if I am not, and I can serve a child with disability, without regard to whether or not they receive special education services. From the public school, my obligation is to make up to minor adjustments. The department um, and the federal programs staff. Uh, believe that that's an appropriate standard for non-public schools serving English learners, regardless of whether or not they receive. Uh, way business for public school services because they have a section, non-public schools. Have a statutory obligation to not discriminate if the national origin. Uh, you would find which. Services is part of that national origin and discrimination protection. Uh. At the notice stage, uh, department staff thought this was a um. A way to thread that needle between what the statute requires, what the status quo rules require. And what would be a reasonable expectation by public schools. So that is the one substantive change in dispatch of rules that sort of addresses. Closest and open question in a way that tries to balance the um. The skills, abilities, assets, uh, expectations in the non-public school environment. And the uh, statute requirements both in two eighty point four as well as the Civil Rights Act to support English learners.
Schools that are accredited by the department. Whether they're public or non-public. All have to follow federal rules.
Yes, and um. And chapter two six, two sixteen, the Iowa Civil Rights Act.
Right. So when I'm reading through these rules. I, in my mind, I just think they automatically apply to who's ever accredited. Is that wrong?
No. Civil rights protections don't drive distinction between state or credit and non-public schools in independent areas. So this.
So when I'm reading this rule. I'm just thinking it applies to whoever accredited.
It applies to.
Yeah, I agree with that, yeah. That's why I read any of the rules, so this thing is whoever accredited, they have to all, you know. Follow the federal rules and regulations, that's that's a given.
Thomas, I know we're not, um, I'm sure that this was a lift from previously, but on page four, under number two, it says. Research that involves the application of rigorous systematic objective procedures. And then under number five, it has inclusion of rigorous data analysis that are adequate to test. Is how do we measure rigorous? Like, is that, is that normal in rule language to use? Just printer like that?
It's. This is sort of string of, you know, straddling the line between aspirational and something that's.
That's kind of what I was wondering.
There are some, you know, the. If the study was based on chronology, the palm reading. Versus, you know, I don't think that the intent is that it be double-minded. Uh, yeah, in publishing a peer-reviewed journal, but there are standards for action research. If I'm, you know, there are standards for uh, doing single subject design or classroom observations. Uh, there are standards for rigor for on testing a hypothesis with my student population or in my building. So I would defer to the um. The collective judgment of the county area experts about what is and what is not rigorous in these contexts. But there are, there are measure, there are conditions of rigor. Uh, in educational research and for high stakes decisions. As a layperson, I'd like to see those admission.
That's sort of covered by saying you want reliable results. So you can skip all liability to your head, right? You can skip systematic, objective rigors. I want reliable results. That's all of that to me, but.
And again, uh, that line is status quo, but if it can be consolidated, that would be consolidated, shortened, made more dynamic for land users. That would be a bad end of this process. Uh, Bureau Chief Julian Datsin, federal programs bureau chief is also uh, able to speak to this. And correcting the mistakes that I made. If there are any questions for her, um, she, I believe she can be brought to the panelist.
So how would, how would the, how would the rule deal with this? If if I'm not, being not proficient. There are classes for me beyond just immersion in the regular class. Classes are held for these students that they might assume that that's true, that there is a special class going in that school. Or these students. Every school will handle it maybe a little bit differently. But there is supplemental funding or additional assistance for these students who are who are identified. And sometimes it's in accordance with a regular program. But it could be extra help. Other times during the day. So we wouldn't necessarily see a class filled with these students rather than. I'm not, that hasn't been my experience, but. I'm not saying that that's, my experience is very limited, but there could be schools where they have a whole class for a special. Yeah, segment of the day, but. I would, I don't think it would be for the entire day though. I would.
To dive around this point, um, think of the E L services like you would think of special education. Both are federal entitlements, both there's an expectation for advancement in the general curriculum. Both there are different delivery models from uh, immersion, uh, separate classes. But the preference is the maximum extent appropriate to the. That either a child with disability or a child who's an English learner or a child who's an English learner who also has a disability. Uh, to the maximum extent appropriate or in the general environment, their agenda and education might be supported by. An English uh, E L or a teacher, a special educator, or some of those. So special education is a good analog to this discussion, the preference is a general classroom, the goal is the general.
You can turn out least restricted or most restricted.
And again, the people who actually have teaching licenses can.
Any other comments or questions for? Chapter sixty, English learners. And move it to. We are attentive to. All the rules of chapter sixty. We just want there. Maybe we'll give notice. I can buy and brook to further discussion. Hearing none, notice in favor to keep my saying on, I would say same sign. Why he was carrying.
And the final comment about these rules expected to be then at your November. Um, before adoption and violent, but some were all. Um, at your November agenda, at the notice level, expect to see some partition of correct rules, finance rules, school transportation rules. Um, and one minor observation about dispatch of rules, executive order ten requires two public hearings for each movement. So there will be a public hearing for each rule making in the grandstanding, but the department staff have committed to having public. The second rule making public hearing throughout the state. So for dispatch of rules, about half of them. The second public hearing will be hosted by Roosevelt High School of Join. The other half will be hosted by uh, at the central office at uh, Davenport Community School District. Uh, so there will be additional rulemaking bucket hearings will be dispersed throughout the state. Uh, there's benefits to getting outside of the line. Having practice outside of the line. To any person, so that if any uh. Individual is interested in having a rules hearing, which may or may not be attended. Hosted in their community.
So those rules, many are they accessible virtually to?
Uh, not this batch, but subsequent batches will be as the, as the rules process, it's rules become more high visibility. The batch of rules that you are seeing this board meeting um. Are. Less comment inducing. Than some of the rules that you will see at future, at the next two board meetings, the that next batch, two batches of notices of intended action will have virtual actions.
So these are a long hanging.
These are a long hang, because these are the, yes, these are the starting rhythm of. To start the rhythm of executive order, and these were the first twenty-one that the department reviewed, and they will be the first twenty-one slash nineteen that are adopted.
Give kudos to you.
Again, more of our.
All your big question player and.
It's a, it's a. It's a, it's a department. Thank you.
And I do think it's important, I mean, you give us that context about, you know, a lot of this, I'll say on the consent agenda was. Uh, revised language, but not changes in the actual uh, rules. And I think that clarity is really helpful as people understand how we go through this process, so.
So expecting November and December, that your notices will contain two. The uh, notice of intended action that you will act on and then some sort of quote record, cheat sheet. Clip notes, side by side, strike number, um, expect that to, expect that in your board packet going forward. But I will, uh, the, the rules and the legal team will prioritize, uh, putting that second product for each notice of intended action.
And what was provided to us, it was provided to the public.
It will be posted, uh, partly daily.
Thank you for saying that, because that would really be helpful. Um, I think another um, addition that you could make is. If you could hyperlink code. When you put these together, so that I can easily go to code and have a thought about it. Is that too difficult?
It's not too difficult, but. Sometimes the electronic filing system, when the rules actually get filed, sometimes it misbehaves, if there are links. I'll see about putting the links into the, the companion document.
That would be great. I don't want to create extra work, but sometimes I like to refer to code and that myself and it just.
The end product will be hyper, but what I file sometimes when the, the legal team files with rules management. The rule making portal, sometimes it. It's a perpetual tool to use, it, it discuss what it wants to.
Um, we're a bit ahead of schedule, so let's take a, a ten minute break, be back here by. Five minutes till then. You know, that will build new floor and programs, so let's take a ten minute break.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Council of Early Learning Center. I hear we have some, before we do the tour, we have some preliminary presentations.
We're waiting for someone. I'm just smiling. We're waiting for IT to smile. Well, good morning and welcome. We're so excited to have you here to see us and holding your skateboard meeting in Council of Schools. And especially excited to talk a little bit about our Early Learning Center and take you on a tour with this facility. So I'm going to give you just a little bit of an overview of our next hour and 10 minutes, I believe, is what we can plan. We're going to do the overview of the Early Learning Center, take you on a tour, share a little bit of our highlights of our diploma club one program. And then have a few students here to greet and talk with you a little bit about their experience in the Council of Schools. So you might wonder how this came about. We really wanted to meet the needs of our community. And when I first arrived here in 2017, I really saw a need, especially with our largest subgroup in Council of Schools is poverty. And I saw a need for early literacy and really ensuring that our students in kindergarten ready. But as I began to dream about an early learning center and being able to say we have universal access for every four year old in the council of schools. I quickly learned that our, my form, that prior school had done a lot of remodeling that had yet to do with the middle schools. So I knew to be wise, and so I floated a bond, renovated the two middle schools. And now we were able to move on to the vision we had. So the land that we're setting on was our land to begin with. We had an old school building, so we did work with the school building and we let it set until it was time and the timing was right. So after coming out of the pandemic, we had Esther Dollars and we began to bring them again. We began to talk to the Department of Ed and our governor about an early learning center and using some of the Esther Dollars to be innovative, to provide universal access, but not only that, begin to be one of the first K-12 districts in the state of Iowa that would offer infant and toddler childcare and to become accredited in doing that work. From there, we began to partner with the Department of Ed and Dr. Matthews is going to talk a little bit about our partnership, not only with the Department of Ed, but Jennifer Garden out of KU University. We wanted to partner with the university so that we could get research done to see because it became very important to our governor, whether we could scale this up or scale it down to a small world community, if this possible, because we know we can provide a lot of wraparound services for our young learners as they come in to our buildings. And so as we began to do that, we looked at the birth to three model. I won't tell you, we weren't a little concerned and afraid, can we do this really as a K-12 school this week? But we knew we needed to meet the growth for the childcare and we knew we needed to help and be a partner in our community to provide avenues for our parents to get back toward, and that is critical across our state. So how did we fund it? Well, the governor and the Department of Ed came in agreement with us on $7 million towards the project. This building costs about 20 million. My school board allowed me to match five million. So I was at 12, so I went knocking. And we were able to work with my, my school board president is also the president of our foundation. And Mr. LaFerla and I began to knock on doors. We have one citizen here in the Council of School District that bought into the story. He believed the need and he saw the need and he pledged four million. From there, we went across the river to the Buffett, the Sherwood Foundation. I knew if I could get that foundation to buy in, he would close your, others would follow suit. And we just continued to knock on doors and I can tell you, when we opened this building, it was going paper. So we were super excited about the partnership of private and public funds. From there, we began to dream, design and look at, and we're super excited. And the best part of your day is walking by that infant room or that baby room and watch us crawl to that window to pull up saying, take me please. And I love that. So I can't tell you, right now, we need to study the data to see how it works. We need to continue to look for funding. As you all know, we are a state that does a point five funding. Every year I champion and push for at least some weighted funding for preschool so that we can continue to fund. One positive piece is when we had Ezra Dollars, we were able to carry 100% of our statewide preschools, so we began to thank that. But as you all know, with unspent authority and that wildly set up spending and funding source, as I draw that down, it will decrease my spending authority. But at least we have set aside the dollars and we are good as we move forward. So at this time, I would like to allow Dr. Matthews to take you on the journey. I didn't do something wrong, Lisa?
It's like yours did that. I will start talking while Lisa works on that. I just wanted to really take the opportunity to thank everyone for the partnership and collaboration. We were really fortunate to be able to work with great teams from the Iowa Department of Education and Kansas, University of Kansas and Jennifer Gardens Children's Project. We began working with them in December of 2021. And we had regular check-ins and visits and increased those visits to monthly and then even twice a month as we moved through the project and started digging into the work. And what I want you to know about this partnership is it was all really focused around MTSS, which is multi-tiered systems of support. And we have a great model in the state for K-12. We were using that model to revise our K-12 practices as well. And we wanted to align our work in the early childhood setting to the great work that's already happening in the K-12 space. So we were able to partner and really look at the tool that we use for K-12. It's called the CME. And that's a self-assessment tool of our MTSS implementation. And the Jennifer Gardens team and the Department of Ed team were able to adapt that tool to really meet the needs of early education. And we were so fortunate in October to have those teams come to us in Council of Schools. We spent two days with them and we went through that self-assessment tool. We were able to provide some feedback on the tool itself, but we were also able to get really important feedback and input on our practices and our procedures in our current preschool settings and what that would look like as we scaled that to the birth to three setting as well. So we spent two days with the tools, self-reflecting on our processes, our current reality, and then developing an action plan. And the team was just instrumental in helping us create that plan. And then that plan became part of our regular agenda. It was a standing item on our agenda when we did those check-ins twice a month to update on the progress that our team had made towards the plan during that time. And then also if we needed any support on any of the action items, then the team would come together and brainstorm. From that, one positive piece that also came was leading to a book study. So the co-authors of this multi-tiered systems of support for young children, Judith Carter and Robin Miller Young, are part of our team. They're from Jennifer Gardens and they co-planned and co-facilitated a book study with one of our early childhood lead teams this winter and into the spring to make sure everyone had common language and common understanding around MTSS and early education. And that was really powerful as the team made some decisions about practices and procedures that would support the academic, social, emotional and behavioral needs of all of our learners in the birth to five setting, whether they're in the early learning center or in our district preschool programs in the elementary school. So we were just so fortunate for that powerful work leading up to the opening of the early learning center. And then from that, we're all so fortunate to have ongoing professional learning support from the team as well. We have six days that are half-day professional learning for all preschool teachers and teacher assistants in our system. And members from Jennifer Gardens and the Department of Ed are joining us either onsite or virtually for each of those. They're co-planning and co-facilitating this professional learning, really focusing around early childhood PBIS of positive behaviors. And then aligning that to our district work, we've already had some strong implementation on state and middle schools and foundation. Making sure that alignment pieces there to meet those social and emotional needs of the young learners here. In fact, the first day, we had that professional learning, which is the past Monday, so I wanted to share a couple of visuals with you there. On the left, that is our, all of our preschool teachers and teacher assistants in the district. And they're gathered out in this open common space here for that professional learning. And then on the right is our smaller group of infant and toddler teachers. Sometimes they come together for professional learning and sometimes we need to differentiate that for the different needs of the ages of the learners. So we know how important those social, emotional, behavioral needs are for our students and especially for our young learners as they're figuring out how to navigate and explore this world. But we also know the academics are really important too. That's another piece of the MTSS. And so I wanted to talk to you a little bit about our curriculum instruction and assessment. You'll have an opportunity in a few minutes to see the building itself. And I just know the thoughtful design of all of the areas of the early learning center really lends themselves to that learning through active play, which we really believe in for early childhood. We wanted to make sure our curriculum framework aligned to that. And so when we started looking at what curriculum we would use, we were already familiar with the high school framework. That's what we were using in our preschool classrooms throughout the district. And they have an infant and toddler framework as well. So it seemed natural to build on what we already had, what was already looking well for us and see how that might support our youngest learners. The, the big focus for that high school learning is really igniting children's interest in learning, setting up conditions in their environment for that natural learning and for embedded learning opportunities around all domains. And then the toddler focus is also on really making sure you have supportive and caring relationships and that trusting adults in that, you know, initial setting. So the framework really seemed to lend itself well to the direction that we were heading. It aligned to the Iowa early learning standards that we were already making sure we were addressing and then also supported by the assessment tool that I'll talk about a little bit later here. We did want to make sure that we had those intentional embedded learning opportunities in addition to that learning through active play. And that has been a focus in our preschool professional learning for many years. Some examples of what that might look like, you can see in this picture here. At first glance, you might just think, oh, there's a couple of kids playing with Play-Doh together. But that teacher was very intentional about setting up some conditions. There's shapes, there's colors, they can look at patterns. That's all directly related to some math standards and the Iowa Early Learning Standards. So it's not as simple as just Play-Doh. The adult then interacts with the children playing with that, talks to them about observations of color and shape, in addition to the fine motor skills that they're working on with playing with Play-Doh. So that's one example. Our teachers are very skilled at multiple examples throughout the day. So when students arrive, they might be choosing their names or recognizing their names, that literacy connection of them for early, first early skill. They might write their names to check in on something. When they do the calendar in the morning, they're focusing on numbers and patterns. So early literacy and numeracy is an important part of all of those components of the day. At centers, you might see a dramatic play center set up as a restaurant. And the teachers have menus with food items and prices and the children will start dramatic play and they'll take orders. So they're, they're always having a writing component in their centers. So really addressing all of those different learning pieces through exploration and active play with peers. We supplement our high school framework and curriculum with Read It Again. This is once again, something we were using in preschool. It's a wonderful curriculum supplement. And again, they have an infant and toddler component, so it made sense to look at how that might look for us in that space and that setting. Some benefits of Read It Again is that it's really about a shared book reading experience and having multiple reads of the same book with a different purpose, because you might be focusing on some concepts about print one time when you read it. So really pointing out the title and author, a cover, a spine of a book, looking at some of those features of a book itself. And the second time you read it, you might focus in on some vocabulary. And sometimes you're going to focus in on the narrative. So students are starting to understand story structure. But having me read the familiar books allows children to, okay, I know this book, I've understood the story. Now we can learn about different components of it. So that's really exciting. They have recommended books and lessons for each of those different skills. And then finally, that leads us to our assessment. And I feel so fortunate in the state of Iowa that we use teaching strategies pulled to assess our students in our current setting in three and four-year-olds. We were using that to assess six different domains and 30 key objectives. So it's an observation-based tool and it's very comprehensive. But what I really love and appreciate about it is that there's progressions of natural learning that again, we can apply all the way at birth through kindergarten and actually go through third grade. So you can see where they're going after they leave that preschool setting and make sure that they're kindergarten ready. So again, thinking about our babies, it's, it's about getting them familiar with books, noticing books as they progress. It's, oh, that's a book I've heard before and I love it. And I, I'm going to pull it off the shelf and I want to invite somebody to read it to me, going over some of those social skills and then knowing that we read for a purpose sometimes. So just seeing how those skills progress and, and where that learning is going on, that progression really helps us to see where our students are, where they need to go next, how we can scaffold instruction to meet them where they're at. And then finally, as Dr. Merlo said, infants and toddlers were new to us and there was a lot of new learning that needed to occur to prepare us to be able to provide high-quality programming in this space. We were very fortunate. Our Iowa Childcare Resource and Referral team here in Council of Schools has just been phenomenal. And Ms. Sanders has taken the lead on really working closely with them to make sure that all of our applications and the different databases we need to be signed up with to get that EHS accreditation and licensure was in place so that we had safe programming, high-quality programming, the qualifications that our staff were met to the standard required. So it was a very large undertaking and we're just so appreciative of the support that we've had. And I'm appreciative of Ms. Sanders' work in that area. With that, the required training, there's some overlap in infant toddlers with our preschool such as CPR, first aid. Everybody needs to have that mandatory reporter training. But there were some differences that were required. And so they worked, we worked closely with Childcare Resource and Referral to make sure that we understood safe infant sleep practices and things like that, that we didn't have to think about necessarily with our preschool students. With that then was also the nutrition program, feeding infants and toddlers is different than feeding preschool students. And so we worked with our Director of Nutrition to make sure that, in our preschool setting, we were still able to use the National School of Lunch Program. But then in our infants and toddler classrooms, we're using the child and adult care program, so CACF. So understanding all of the different components and regulations with the timing of their feedings, bottles and baby food are different, just different pieces of the bag, feeding a bottle, taking food packets, different handling. So again, just a very large undertaking, but we are so excited about the work that we've been able to do to make sure that we just have great programming for our youngest learners here and our birth to three space as well. And it's just been so wonderful to welcome them into the state and into our district. With that, I didn't know if anybody from the team can really have anything they wanted to add about our partnership or our work before we had questions and do worse.
So I can really allow you and the Bureau of Early Childhood at the Department of Education. It's all I can do to say my heart is full because this, this is such a wonderful reality as an example in our state of what early care health that it became to look like. My team, both within the Department of Ed as well as with some of our other state agencies, we are, we have been privileged and been honored to be in the conversations and witness to the process that it took from, as Dr. Merlo described, been around working conversations all the way up to this beautiful building that we're hosting a meeting in today. I have no doubt that I was able to be here literally today and I won't lie, even without children, it was awesome. Now, but it's children even better. But you're going to be able to see obvious concrete examples of what represents a high-quality early learning environment. You're going to see beautiful, enriching materials that cause children to think and inquire and really pushes their development and their overall wellbeing. You're also going to see the obvious attention to health and safety. I, I know that. I appreciate the references to understanding infant toddler environments. Education programs don't really prepare you for that when you're thinking more about being in a school setting. But we know that our education system has evolved and in the early care health and education space, we have to think more broadly. In addition to those cognitive principles, you're also going to see abstract things. You're going to see attention to detail with interactions with kids. You're going to hear about engagement between adults and children. And probably the most important thing that you think about with all learners, whether we're talking from birth, infancy into high school, you're going to see adults and children interacting. We know that language brings rich environments and attention to responsive questioning or dialogue is critical in the development and learning for young children and old children. So I hope that you, as you're walking around it and having the opportunity to see the different spaces that you maybe look for, some of those more discrete details. We are here as a state system, as part of the Department of Education's Board of Education meeting. That's a symptom level. I would be remiss if I could not help out the efforts that have had to take place at every level of our local, regional and state systems. I can't say enough for the efforts that I've seen from Manny Sanders, Dr. Matthews, Dr. Merlo in bringing together West Central Community Action Agency, the local head start. Their partners with St. Albert's School and the YMCA preschool. Bringing in, as Dr. Matthews represented, Child Care Resource and Referral. They are the go-to in more of the infant body series for understanding how high-quality programming together. And partnerships are hard. We know that at every level of the system. But as we follow it up, we saw the ADA very much involved, very initiative aware efforts. And as Dr. Matthews alluded to, University of Iowa with some of their evaluation activities were in order of the Department of Education lens, but also Jennifer Gardens and their technical assistance. Even though we have not seen visibly a huge presence by Health and Human Services, my colleagues within that state agency have been having a presence because this is one of those spaces. We know the broad early care health and education space is not just one agency. It is multiple players in a much larger early childhood system that this state has. So it's been delightful to know that even though HHS was not physically here with us, they were only a phone call or an email away and we are very much grateful of their interactions and the way they're with us too. I am absolutely delighted or elated to have you all physically see this space today. And I hope you enjoyed the tour and a really warm and generous thank you to the district for inviting us in to learn from your experiences and then help us as a state system be able to take some of those lessons, learn, lessons learned more broadly. Thank you.
So as we've been taking any questions, I thought when I said universal access, I never really spoke about what does that mean in Council of Schools. And we had 32 classrooms already and a partnership with St. Albert's and a partnership with the YMCA. But we needed more to be able to allow at least 575, 78 is our kind of universal access a number so that we can provide that. And currently, we are very, very close to those numbers. So no waitlist this year. We were still doing a screening last week, I think. But as we'll take questions and then I also want to introduce our tour guide and especially our Director of the Early Learning Center.
It's 578.
It's, it's kind of our threshold that we want to get in. I think 532 is kind of where we're setting. So it's really close to that. Usually our kindergarten class hovers around 590 to 615. That's where our kindergarten for the district kind of sets. And so we're, we're, we knew we couldn't build big enough because we added the infant and toddler room to hit that 600. But we think it's worth taking three of the classrooms, as you'll see, for that, that kind of piece to see how we do with providing that almost cradle college kind of feel here in Council of Schools.
So right now, is there an application process or how do they?
Yes, we use an application and screening process and we use the Ages and Ages questionnaire. It's a developmental screener as well as income. We collect income and then an application that identifies risk factors to prioritize. Need and also helps us to match families with the different funding streams we have available. We do blend funding streams. We are fortunate, we offer 30 classrooms that have full day four-year-old preschool. As Dr. Merlo said, the state pays 4.5 of a student enrollment and then we break head start, shared visions and some grant entitled dollars to, to match that other half, to, to provide those full day opportunities. So we, we use that screening and application process to, to match students with those funding streams.
For your infant and toddlers, how is that funded?
So we also use a screening and application process for that because we are the HR reasons. We can accept childcare assistance and parent tuition dollars as well for those reasons.
Scholarship available to parents.
We do not currently have scholarships. We have the childcare assistance accepted. And then we are priced very well compared to some of the other facilities to make sure that it's affordable.
How many years now? Okay, second year?
Yeah, we just opened it August 28th.
So obvious question, who is Ann Nelson?
Ann Nelson, we have a family in our community, John and Ann, who were great champions for education. And in fact, they do a beautiful ceremony every year where they celebrate teachers every year, I think about $5,000 at this ceremony. I mean, just honor the work that we do in Council of Schools. And she passed away. And so our lead donor was good friends with the Nelson family and asked if we named the building after Ann Nelson. And she, she was a teacher librarian. She just did a lot of great things. And so we proudly said, of course we would.
And so we proudly said, of course we would. And that is who Ann Nelson. So you're going to give a tour?
I have a question, sorry. So I love this space. I mean, I think this is absolutely amazing. I have a daughter in preschool, so this is just really cool for me to see. I'm always, I'm always wondering about, I guess, like engagement. So I heard a lot about teacher engagement, but what about parents engaging parents or family members? This space is incredible. So I'm wondering, do, can families come and use it like on the weekends or after hours or, and then are there, you know, ways or methods that you guys are kind of, I mean, it seems like it's more geared maybe towards lower income on how to engage kind of with your children and things like that. So I always think that's important to provide to parents as well. So this will be awesome. So I hope this video is outside.
I'll let Dr. Matthews talk about how they engage parents here. But I would say that we have a really nice socioeconomic status range of families that are in here. We have grandchildren of our administration in here. We have a child from another district superintendent in another district that their child here. So we have a large range, but we do want to serve our community. And our intention is that from the very youngest to the very, the day they walk across our graduation stage, that we are going to provide them with high quality education. We're going to move that academic needle and they're going to graduate ready to enter college or career. So I would say that there's a good range here, even though we do have time poverty in Council Bluffs. It's our goal to bring that site.
And then as far as family engagement, that is one component of that CME, early education that we looked at and did the self-assessment that created some action steps, examined our current reality. We think family engagement is important at all levels and that's important. Last year we were able again to partner with the, I'm trying to think of all the partners, Green Hill DEA, Family Inc., and we offered its positive solutions for families. It's a very robust family engagement opportunity. And we're going to host that here. We piloted it with two of our schools last year. And it will be here, but open to all families in our preschool settings. They just formed a PCA here with it being a new building. That was part of the action plan to increase family engagement, to get voice and input from families and parents about what they want to see. In addition to the fact we always take with home visits and conferences. And as part of that, we offer opportunities. How would you like to be involved? Do you want to come volunteer? Do you want to read? Do you have something special about your, your career, your home or your culture that you would like to come in and share with students in the classroom? So we're, we're continuing to expand those options.
Do you have workforce challenges like everybody else or is it?
Well, I mean, we, we always could use more, but we're very fortunate to have been able to open to this stuff. We had one vacancy at one high school when we opened and that was because of a late move by the family. And there's not much we can do and a lot occurred. But we were able to cover and find a high qualified sub that retired that taught math. So we were like, yes, here we go. But we also have a lot of grow your own programs. So the pathway show here, we have in the early childhood certification pathway. And then also in the, you know, the grant, is it T? Yeah, TRPA. I always forget the A. I'd say TRP. But we have about twenty-eight that are in that opportunity that was provided by the state.
And we hired one directly out of that program and she's working here today. So very proud of that.
Great. Thank you.
So we started the tour for the sake of time. Is that okay?
Yes. So would you, Mark and Mandy, would you stand? Mandy Sanders is our principal of the building. She is our director and has done a beautiful job. And Mr. Mark Schultz is our chief of elementary schools. And so they're going to help us. We're going to break into two groups. And we kind of have this pattern set up because we did it at the ribbon cutting. So I'm going to let them talk about, I don't know if it's you, Mark or Mandy, who's going to set that up or Tracy, was it you?
Yeah, we're going to take, so if we take half, let's do two lines and we're going to go through.
Okay. So Mark, you just want to take a group out. I think there's about eight or ten in the room. About how many? We have like sixteen, seventeen in a row, eight, eight, ten in each group?
Okay.
Everybody joining us remotely, the board's going to take a tour of the facility. And then they will be back to resume the meeting in a little bit.
Follow up question before we move to, we have students here, right? No, very impressive, very, very.
Dr. Matthews, just ask a question, sustainability. Do you address that?
Yeah, it's, it's something that kind of waits on my mind because of the point five funding. But I have a trust and belief in our legislators and our governors, especially knowing how important this work is. And that we'll continue to research the opportunities to increase funding for preschool. But I also know that schools can't do alone. So we'll continue to seek the grants and the foundations and private dollars that we can find to help to continue with this funding and this work. It's, it's impressive and, and we, we know that our community has joined ranks with us. I do worry when we talk about scaling up and scaling down across the state without additional state support, it will, it will be hard for some districts because they won't have the partnerships that we have.
Sure. Then you get the thing where you're done.
Thank you.
Very impressed.
Thank you. Thank you. So next year we're going to talk about our diploma plus one and my laptop disappeared. I'm not sure where that went. But somebody took the laptop and I have three students who are here today. Is my laptop on the way back in? Okay, so I was. I mean, and I'm not, I'll be honest, I carry paper around with me because I'm not. But I'll talk a little bit about it before Lucy gets back in here with it. I'm assuming that's who's coming. The diploma plus one is an initiative that I just really, from the time I arrived, I, I always thought about what, what possibilities can we do beyond the classroom, beyond the P twelve education? And I remember my first year sitting with an executive coach and him asking me my vision. And my vision is for every student to graduate with a high school diploma and a second credential. He said, what does that look like? I said, I want them to walk across stages, the colleges and be able to go into a workplace. I said, it's kind of about the three Es, employed, enlisted or enrolled. That's the goal, every student. So as you see on that banner over there, I'll give you one visual. That's for students that walked across the Iowa Western stage this year before they walked across ours. We had a hundred and seven seniors and we added ten more juniors that earned their associates before they graduated. Some of them earned an associate with applied science. We had five hundred and ninety-six, oh, here we go, five hundred and ninety-six seniors that graduated. And up to five hundred and ninety-six, eighty-one percent this year graduated with a second credential. So we call it leveling up for our students. And so we had seventy-three, I can't tell that seventy-three percent my first year, I mean, last year. And then we got to eighty-one percent. We have goals. What really excited me about Council Bluffs when I transitioned is when I researched Council Bluffs, a statement they had was making post-secondary inescapable for all students. And I thought, oh, my God, that lines up in my vision. Because the school I came from was a large urban district. And we were in the process of moving into the pathways and J E Dunn had really partnered with me. And I had a community college that allowed me to put a hundred into an early college academy. I don't know who's running my clicker, but there we go. And so diploma plus ones are providing our students ways to achieve more before they graduate. This is the guiding question I always ask either employers, educators, college, is why make students wait? If our students can do more before they graduate, I'm now saving them from student debt. I'm providing them that jump street because of the articulation we have with our community colleges to our universities and other four-year institutes that they're running in as a junior or at least a second semester sophomore. So we provide pathways and opportunities for our students to achieve more. And you're going to hear from three students that are in those pathways in just a few minutes. Go ahead. So this is what we look like. This is our infographic that explains it. You see the pathways and opportunities at the top. To our far left, you'll see the college pathways. And to our far right, you'll see our career ready pathways. And I think, well, we had postpart and I'm seeing that they didn't bring them. But we've created what we call a postpart because that is an aspire. And our Iowa West Foundation used to fund what we call Pottery to Promise. So I started out on this endeavor. And because of the reimbursement we've received from the state, about fifty percent for CE and the GIN ed and about a point seven to a point seven five of the CTE courses. I'm now, I'm funding it alone, right? District's boards bought in, here we go. Board seeing numbers creep up and thinking, Marillo, how are you going to continue to afford this program? And so Iowa West Foundation has shifted from pot promise to aspire. And this year they put in two hundred and eighty thousand to the program with the goal for them that they'll soon fund me at a half million. And this is guaranteeing that all our students have this opportunity. And when you see early college at the top, that is competitive. And that is where our students apply for that. They're on the campus for two years, full-time. They never come back from high school. They graduate with an associate's degree or an associate's with applied science. And many of our students, we have prestigious scholars have come through. Last year we had our first gate scholarship, that recipient. And just excited about the work. Our kids still are coded to their high schools, which means that they can still participate in the extracurricular activities. College credit acceleration, that's for our students that just want that traditional high school experience. But they want to achieve that associate's degree. We all push them, excuse me, they get in that pathway to at least earn their freshman year. So they go through that. It's all lined up. It's strategically set in their graduation plan as they decide on their pathway. The career and academic pathway, that kind of goes both ways. It's college bound and it's also then on the other side. And then Trade Works is one that I went after a retired brain surgeon who wife really loved and had a passion for kids that didn't connect to college. He gave me one point four million to create Trade Works, Ben Rantick is his name, to, at Thomas Jefferson High School and AL. We got Google to partner with us, Iowa West Foundation partnered with us. We built these two trade works. Our kids get five experiences as a freshman, electric plumbing, HVAC, construction, auto, auto diesel. Their sophomore year, they do green. Now what's my passion? Their junior and senior year, bam, they're out on the Iowa Western campus. And now they're completing as a junior, senior. And by their senior year, we expect them in apprenticeship programs moving that direction. They've got their passion. They've got their pathway. So that's one of the areas. And I'm going quickly because I know we're behind. So that's how we break it out with the college bound overhead. That's how we break it out for the career reading. Our children start hearing about diploma plus one elementary. We have what we call a diploma on track to diploma plus one. And we have data measures that we share at parent teacher conferences. So our, my first year, I had a parent call saying, somebody told me my kid was not on track. My kid's on track. I said, okay, what's the conditions that we're looking at? We expect them to be here every day. So if your child's not coming to school, they're not on track. And then as we move into our middle school and high school, we're really now, and we were IP. Before I got here, we had two really great IP elementary, but our middle schools just never took off. And so this year we are redesigning our middle schools to provide explorations classes for our students to figure out what type of pathway they want to be in. And we're really tracking the transition and providing those summer activities, especially for eighth grade moving into ninth. So this is kind of what our students earn as they go through. You might be wondering, well, what do the credentials look like? And so as you can see in Trade Works, they earn this as a ninth grade, they earn our OSHA ten. We know to be on a site, they've got to have that safety and security and pass those courses right there where the employers feel safe. And then you can see the associates, trade works, college credit, career and academic. And then we have what we call market valid value assets. And that far left shows you, these are the things that we really want, not only our students. And we have several students that will achieve more than one credential. But we also want to make sure that as they're putting together their resume, as they're applying for college scholarships, as they're applying for work, that they have things that they can put on their resume that adds value. My goal is to see our children graduating with opportunities into a living wage and not an entry wage. I want them to be able to walk out prepared. If they want to go straight into a career, you bet. I want that door open for them. They want to get into a college. I want them to be ready. I want them to be able to be completers of that pathway they choose there. And I want to cut down on the student debt. I don't want our kids to think they can't achieve. Many of you met Stacy outside. Stacy will tell you, I was fearful about college because I didn't know how my parent, my mom would pay for it. And we have her in a video that I'm going to release. I'm going to have someone send it for me so you can kind of hear Stacy's story. But she is our first, she was the one that I was talking about, that's our first apprenticeship in the state of Iowa for early childhood.
Who else did you learn in college?
Early, anyone? Okay, yes. And no, you have to start your junior, senior year. So it is a application process and then they do interviews and then they're selected. And I have twenty-five seats. We have two cohorts. So there's always.
Forty-five children.
So it's fifty and fifty. I'm sorry, twenty-five, twenty-five for fifty on the campus.
Okay.
In my last district, I had a hundred and found the funding at the floor.
Sure.
But if I have funding, because we have about seventy-eight to eighty-two, I think, applications last year for twenty-five seats. So the kids are ready and want to be a part. We just have to find the funding point.
They're on that campus, so.
Full-time.
Full-time.
Yeah. And all of the students, when you see the Trade Works at Iowa Western and these, the kids are on that campus either half-day or full-time. Yeah. And some of these classes are in the evening and some of them they have to commit to summer. And they commit because they want those opportunities. This is real world. And, and they are really digging in and getting excited about the pathways.
How do you deal with transportation issues for some of the kids that can't get here and there?
I run buses. You bet. We run, we, we transport. And if I'm going to provide opportunity, I've got to remove every obstacle in their pathway. Because it's important to me that when they graduate, they're ready to those three Es. And they have, I, I was, I used to be a high school principal in another state. And what would kill me is when you'd say, what are you doing, John? What are you going to do after? I don't know. They won't know. They got to know. And so it really becomes about that graduation plan. It really becomes about our counselors being intentional, our grad coaches being intentional, our administration being intentional. This is not something you throw up and hope. This is something, and we've been building this since two thousand and eighteen. So two thousand and eighteen, I've been building this and with a team that has just really done the work. I invest also in Iowa Western. I have a full-time CTE coordinator. Kathy is standing here with a full-time counselor that's on that campus. I have a full-time coordinator for the early college academy. I have this is a kind of work-based learning coordinator. And it is important to us that if I'm going to put that many, any day, I could have over three hundred students on that campus. And so if I've got three hundred juniors and seniors running around with college kids, I got eyes on. And we're tracking, we follow, we watch midterms. Every time a kid gets accepted into a college, Dr. Spencer Matthews Rosen, a banner up on the wall. We, we list it out. We show them where they're filming. It's an excitement. It's something that's going to change the face of Council Bluffs as we provide these opportunities for our students to achieve more. So I think that's probably a good spot. Are you guys ready? You got to bring it now. So why don't I invite you guys up to the table for me? And two on this side, would that be okay? And one over here by me. And Melissa, would you introduce our guest? Would you hit my slide?
Well, good morning. My name is Melissa Maline and I'm the chief of school for secondary education. And we have three students here. Our first student right here is Sterling and she is a twelfth grader in the early college academy. And then her home high school is Abraham Lincoln. And then we have, I'm going to skip to Christine real quick. Christine's also a senior and she's in the health sciences pathway. And her home school is Thomas Jefferson and there's, there's Max. And then Max is also a senior at Thomas Jefferson and he is in the well-meaning pathway. Just to kind of reiterate, Dr. Marillo, when she talked about making. Just to kind of reiterate, Dr. Morello, when she talked about making post-secondary education capable. All of the pathways that you saw, they're all co-secondary options regardless if they fall with on the college side or the career side. And the nice thing about all of our pathways is every single one of them has an on-ramp and an off-ramp. And so that is how students get more than one, or if a student is like, you know what, I really enjoyed this side of it, but then I get into it and I've decided I want to go here or there. It allows them to jump from one ramp to the next ramp. So these are three amazing students. So glad that we could share them with you today and I'm going to turn it over to Sterling.
Hello, my name is Sterling Angrath and I have a senior in the Early College Academy Program. When I first heard about ECA in my ninth grade year, the thought of attending college full-time at sixteen years old was crazy and very intimidating. I remember thinking to myself, who would want to give up their high school experience and go to college without a ton of support? After talking to one of my friends who's in the program in my sophomore year, I quickly learned those two judgments were very wrong. Kids in ECA can be as involved in high school activities as they want to be. For me, that looks like being in speech and in National Honor Society. For some of my friends in the program, that means playing free sports or being a part of the show fire. There's nothing, no sacrifices you have to give up to be in ECA. My second false judgment was that I wouldn't have a ton of support. The Early College Academy Program Coordinator, Dr. Spencer Matthews, meets with us each a couple of times a month to discuss college planning, academic resources, and to answer any questions we may have. The other support system that I wasn't necessarily expecting was all of my peers. The seniors who were in the program when I was a junior helped me understand that I'm going to be okay. That this program is so, so valuable and the opportunities I'm going to be awarded, it's stuff I've never imagined. We help each other with homework, we celebrate each other's victories and we trade advice on classes. Without this program, I know that I wouldn't be as prepared as I am today. I know that I'm going to be successful when I transfer to a four-year college, so successful. And I wouldn't have been able to do it without this program. I'm so thankful for the school district for providing me the opportunity to achieve more in my education. Thank you.
My name is Max Avalos. I'm a senior in Conserse High School. I play football up there and I'm a wrestler up there, so. I'm a little involved, a little bit. And I'm actually in the welding program at Iowa Western Community College. I started off as a junior in the Trade Works Academy, which is the one you start off in. Actually, I started as a sophomore, as, as actually my fault. I started as a sophomore, finished Trade Works one, moved on to my junior year, did Trade Works two. Decided I wanted to weld now. Don't laugh me here, but I did welding because I thought the PPE would be pretty cool actually. No, actually, I thought, I thought this is something I could do for the rest of my life. You know, I went into my senior year of high school. Went to Iowa Western. We had a very successful football season here, which is not something we're going to do, especially at Conserse. But we're beginning to watch changes up there. Got the recruitment from multiple coaches in college. Got a couple offers to go play some football, waiting on a couple more here. Honestly, I wouldn't even have thought about going to a four-year institution if I hadn't brought in all the, all the confidence. Being on campus, doing all that kind of stuff, being, being able to talk to professors, being in the environment in college, I would have never thought I'd be able to go up to a four-year university. And even succeed, but being a part of the E-plus-one thing really helped me out, really helped me build some confidence in this, thinking I could do it. So I think I'm going to, although it might not be what I it might not be what I want to do for the rest of my life anymore, but it's always something to fall back on, even if, like, let's say I go to college and this is working out. Being in the classroom environment really wasn't for me. I have something that I can do outside of that, so I have many opportunities. And I want to give a big shout out to her because every time I post my highlights on Twitter, she'll be posting.
You take college press too? Or you were doing that, welding program, or is that, is that?
Like, what, like?
Did you take, yeah, did you take other?
Yeah.
Did you take college classes? So you take some credit with you?
Yeah.
You decided to go to BD or somewhere?
I took some, I think they're called CE classes.
Yeah.
And then AP classes my sophomore year. I think my freshman year I took AP class. You know, I wish it was really good in the classroom growing up. I was not in a good side of town, you know what I mean? So I was blessed to be be in the state that I am now and blessed to give these offers to go play football and get it out of there because I don't want to be where I am right now.
I'm currently a senior at Thomas Jefferson High School. Last year I enrolled in the healthcare exploration class with Ms. Pettit at Iowa Western. A major part of this class is job shadowing at the hospitals. It gives you an experience of job shadowing every department. And I absolutely love that because I got to job shadow labor and delivery and it really stuck with me, so. I'm going to be a OB nurse and I'm currently enrolled in a CNA class at Iowa Western. Which is needed for nursing school and then with the classes that I'm completing now, I'll be able to walk in the spring with Iowa Western's graduation. Including my high school diploma. I chose this path because I get to work with a variety of people and I'm, and I get to help others when they're the most. After high school, I'm now going to Iowa Western for my RN. And then to a four-year university for my BSN and possibly med school. This experience has confirmed how much I enjoy helping people, getting to know patients and being able to help when they're going through difficult times and those exciting times, like having a baby. It is what I want to do and I'm thankful that I have been able to start working towards achieving this goal whilst I'm in high school.
Have you been on the dude live verse?
I'm sorry?
Have you been on some of the live verse?
I have. It was definitely an experience. I wasn't sure when I did get to a hospital that I would be able to go in, but they're like, yeah, as long as you can get the mother's permission. And while she said it was fine, so it's definitely an experience.
Well, so as you can see, the question I always ask, why do we make them wait? It's time to redefine how we deliver a K-12 and how, especially what we do in our high schools to provide opportunities. These students, as you see, man, they, they mess you up. They're pretty cool. So why make them wait? Let's do it. So questions? Any other questions for us?
Come to the football game right now.
It's our big rival game. It's, it's the bragging rights. You have to lift that trophy at the end.
My two grandsons play for Spencer, so the other crosstown rival years.
That'll be a big engine.
And as you can see, most people would say, oh, you know, when we started the program, a lot of our teachers are like, oh my gosh, you're going to take all, all our best leaders and everybody out of this school and, and they soon learned that wasn't true. The students are still connected. The leaders are still there and they're reaching back and pulling up the next, the next juniors. Sophomores, freshmen, they're pulling them forward with them. And so, I mean, it's just been a great success for us to have the diploma plus. And our students now will write me and ask for new pathways. So we added three this year, biomed. And new, we added to our STEM concentrator and we added drones, aviation. And the students will say, can we have this pathway? Could you get that? And our teachers have bought in because I had three teachers go through training this summer, gave up their summer to get their certification to teach those courses. So just really exciting times. So I'm very thankful. Thank you guys for coming today.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sterling, how impressive was that? Here's a patient. Do you think she sent a picture back?
Yeah. That's just, it's crazy to reflect and see what all the different schools are doing compared to my own. That unflattery I said definitely, I'm just sitting there and I'm like, that's crazy. Like my school's, all we really do with college-wise is we partner with WIT and do WIT programs. So like they have a couple welding classes and some mechanics stuff, but it, just the level of intensity that they have to try to quickly spread out to get them ready for that secondary edu, like post-secondary education and enrollment or go out into the workforce. That's, it's wonderful. That is so wonderful.
You have to back it up to your school.
My school is working through. We got a new principal and we got a new guidance counselor. So we're experiencing some rough patches, but hopefully soon we'll get over that.
Maybe it's, it's a little bit, bigger schools sometimes have an opportunity in setting up location to option things that rural communities can't. Doesn't mean they shouldn't try to do as many things as they can, but rural communities like mine for instance. We're fortunate that we have Iowa Lakes close by.
Yes.
And we have Sinner and Spur Lake, you know, so that, that certainly helps. It gives you a lot of possibilities. That, that certainly is impressive by every dollar.
That's right. I always wish we had a DMAC sitting in our town. We have, you know, elementary community colleges is great, wonderful. But we have so many different opportunities. It's, it's nice, but we also have to understand is that there's a lot of funding involved with this. And so they've been very intentional about making sure that those courses are paid for. But then also have to support people in place, make sure that the kids are monitored, watched, encouraged, corrected, whatever. That's impressive.
Yeah.
It's interesting though, and it, it is really, this young man. So welding is my future. And then the more he did that, he realized, hey, I could go beyond that even. Welding's a great occupation. It's, it's going to pay him a lot, but it opened up some other possibilities for him. I think that was so cool. We had a lot of different things that, that segue off of that. He started here, while I opened up some other opportunities and then he just keep moving.
All right. Interlude to our next agenda. The alternate English language proficiency assessment for the 21st century.
Thank you for having us today. My name is Jennifer Den and I am the alternate assessment consultant for the Department of Education and I will let Terry introduce herself when she talks. And do we have somebody that can share the PowerPoint? I guess I didn't answer that before. Or is that something that we're supposed to do?
Well, typically. I'd recommend if you have it.
Okay.
I'd recommend if you have it, Jennifer, to.
Okay.
Go ahead and pull it up.
Go ahead and pull it up just a second.
That way you can control the pace.
Perfect.
We're on the, going pause points in the background.
There we go.
Can you see it, the PowerPoint? Okay.
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay, now I just need to move it a little bit because I need to be, oh, I think I can advance this. Okay, it's just going to scroll because I didn't download it. So like I said, my name is Jennifer Den. I'm the alternate assessment consultant. We are also joined by Tina Wallard, who is our bureau chief for school improvement and I believe Jay Pennington is on as well and he is our bureau chief of information and analysis this time. So our rationale for today is that we are asking that you, as the state board, approve our achievement cut scores for the Alt-Alpha 21, which is the final step in our, of our assessment being fully operational. So I'm going to actually hand it over to Terry.
Hi, everyone. This is Terri Schuster and I am your English learner assessment consultant at the DEE. And we're excited today to present the culmination of what has been a four-year project in a grant that we were awarded for the Alt-Alpha 21, alt meaning an alternate assessment for Alpha 21. So if you think about the ISAS that you might be more familiar with, you know that the state also offers the DLM in place of that for our students with the most significant cognitive disabilities. So in the same way, the Alt-Alpha 21 is in place of the general Alpha 21 that all English learners are expected to take. So that just kind of puts it in perspective of the type of new test that we have spent four years developing. So as I said, it is for the English learners with the most significant cognitive disabilities in grades K through twelve. Which is also a difference between content testing, because as you know, content testing is, takes place in grades three through eight in three years in high school. But for English learners, we give them a test to measure their progress every year in grades K through twelve. So that is a little bit the difference. What we want to do is measure not only attainment of English, but progress on the way to learning English. And we do that by testing the four language domains, which are speaking, listening, reading and writing. When we talk about receptive, we're talking about reading and listening, which are sort of like input and productive, meaning speaking and writing, which are the output. So, and next slide, please. So why are we doing it? Well, there's two practical reasons, which is to meet a federal requirement and to inform progress for English learners in the state as measured as we, as we post on the Iowa performance profiles each year. But the most important reason is the first bullet in that we did not historically have a test that would measure English learners with significant cognitive disabilities progress. Our general assessment, the Alpha 21, is really not designed for students with significant cognitive disabilities and therefore they traditionally did not do very well at all. And were effectively, they could not effectively access it as well as they, their chances of scoring proficient were very, very low. So that is the reason why we need a test such as this, so that it is built for them. How we did it was we worked with our partners at Alpha 21 and other states that were interested. Because as you might imagine, it's not just Iowa that, that was stymied by being able to have an appropriate assessment for English learners with the most significant cognitive disabilities. We were fortunate to be funded by a grant from the US Department of Ed and Iowa, I'm proud to say, was the lead state in this project. And I will say too, while, you know, not to tout Iowa, but I always like to. When I, when Iowa is the lead state, that means that we play a key leadership role in the development of the assessment. And that really works to our advantage for our students and teachers and we try to involve our teachers every step of the way. We're glad to report that five hundred and ten students in Iowa were tested on the Alt-Alpha in the spring of 2023. And that may sound like a lone number to you, but for us, it's a significant number. And that may sound like a lone number to you, but for us, it's a significant number of students that were effectively left out of an appropriate assessment prior to having the ALTA. So um, next slide, please.
Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and talk to you a little bit about the, the development of that, of our timeline. Uh, so we work with nine other states, and they included Arizona, Arkansas, Connecticut, Louisiana, Nebraska, New York, Ohio, Oregon, and West Virginia. Um, so we had three main areas that we looked at, uh, or three main projects that we were working on, and we had uh people involved in every one of those groups uh to develop the alternate assessment, uh, to create a professional learning community. This is one way that we use um as a state to get information out. We had um a really nice community of practice that we, we ran as, as a state, and we had English learner teachers, and we had special education teachers. And that was actually led by Terry, myself, and then Christie Donald, who is our uh gen ed assessment consultant. So we were um kind of unique in that, that we included um gen ed as well um in that process. So um, like Terry said too, uh, we had ne- national experts as well as Iowa educators that were involved in this process. Our standard setting activities took place in July and August of this year, and then also our standard setting was based on the results of that spring 2023 operational field test. So our standard setting process, um, and multi-step iter- iterative process. So that meant we always went back and looked at what we had done, if we may, had to make changes in our process of getting everything set up, we did that. Um, but we looked at performance level descriptors that were written. Um, they were to measure those specific performance level standards. Um, they were reviewed by panel experts, that field test was uh data was used to determine our cut scores. Um, some of the items though went through that review process. Um, and it didn't seem like they really fit in what we had. So we had um an inconsistent item review panel that was held in August. Um, and we had Iowa, I believe we had eight Iowa educators on that panel, um, which was by far more than any other state involved. So we were very excited to um be well represented in that, um, in that activity. So another thing that happened um was we did a contra- a contrasting group study of edu- and where educators provided inducing means to validate the result of our assessment. And I'm gonna pass it over to Terry again.
Okay, um, just a, a couple of things that I wanted to say before we dive into this chart is that, as you know, for, with ISAS, when we think about content testing, the goal is always every year that as many students as possible reach proficiency in their grade level. So it's a little bit different goal for English language proficiency assessment. As you might imagine, it is not, it would not be um the norm to score proficient in, after only having one year of learning English, and experts vary on how long it takes. Usually it's between five and seven. For the state of Iowa, has set a goal of five years to attain proficiency. So when we look at the results, we're not thinking about um, you know, gee, I, I think all of them should score proficient in any given year. What we're thinking about is, are they making progress on that journey to English proficiency, which can, we know they will do, but it does take time. And so when we look at these results, we see that um the green area is showing us the students that scored proficient, and this is based on our field test data across all the states that participated. Um, the red would be the intermediate um area where students are in the middle of their journeys. Um, and those, the, the, that is what we call progressing. And then the blue area would be the emerging students, which are the very beginning levels. So um when we, when we look at this, we think, well, gee, how does that compare to the general ALTA? And it does compare, so these scores are consistent with the general ALTA results in that in any given year, this would be about the number of students that would score proficient. The rest of the students would be given more time, and they would take it in the succeeding year and hope to show progress. We, of course, do want to show proficiency, that's important too, and we do report that on our profiles. But um our accountability measures are progress towards learning English.
Terry, question please?
Sure.
So as a student progresses, say they're in their fourth year and they're proficient, they don't need five years. And I'm assuming they don't take the fifth year, is that correct?
That's right, once the stu- students score proficient on the ALTA 21, whether it's the general ALTA or the, our new ALTA, they are, they are no longer considered an English learner. We say they reclassify to a former English learner, and um they no longer get services. So if a student even reclassifies at three years, they're no longer an English learner. So in our field, we're always trying to work ourselves out of a job. So we, we are hoping that they will reclassify as soon as possible, yes.
Okay.
And it, and our state exit criteria is on the basis of the ALTA 21 assessments. So that is the gatekeeper.
Yeah, just to follow up then, uh, and so like the numbers may not look as promising as what they may actually are, is that once a student exits, they're proficient, they're no longer in this group any longer, so they're not, their scores aren't even being registered. They went through the program, they're proficient, and so you have kids who, who do well, they're no longer considered, you know, English learners are out of the, the mix. And so it, it, the results, which I think are skewed a little low as far as the, the success of the program.
You've actually hit the nail on the head there. So when we think about English learners, we think about a bucket with a hole in the bottom. So we're putting our new students that arrive in to the bucket, but our students that are proficient are going out of the bucket. So this, the subgroup is not what we would call stable because of that reason. So you're absolutely correct that we're, our students who have shown proficiency are not gonna show up here in this chart, um, or in the EL subgroup generally, because they've now reclassified. So that is a very good caveat, I'm glad you brought that up.
So what, uh, what is proficiency? What percentage? Is it 10, 20, 30, 40% of the test? What is, to be proficient, what percentage uh would, would I have had?
So it's not really based on percentages, it's more about how the students perform within the domains of language. So for example, if a student um had higher scores in speaking and listening, which is often the case, because our oral language comes in first, um, and lower scores in reading and writing, they would not be scored, they, they wouldn't be proficient yet until all four language domains reach a threshold. On the general ALTA, there are five levels, and on this test, there are four.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I interrupted you. But you're still talking about proficiency, you're still talking about, at what level? Must be a level somewhere where you say, yeah, that's okay. I mean, uh, you're balancing that, I understand, you have more than one criteria that you're looking for, I understand that. But still, at some point, there is a, a threshold, you say, you gotta be better than that, right?
Right, so um if the student score, we have five levels, well, that's for, I'm sorry, I'm gonna go back to the ALTA, but we have four levels within each language subtest. So the ta- the students are really taking four tests, they're taking a reading, a writing, a listening, and speaking test. And on, let's say on reading, there's levels one, two, three, and four. If they score a three or a four, that would be considered proficient within that domain. Okay, that of listening, let's say. And then the same for speaking, reading, and writing. So if the students score a three or a four out of a possible four for each domain, then they would be considered proficient. Does that make sense?
Part of our task here today is to improve the test order, to extend, trigger what is proficient or not, or progressive.
Does that kind of answer the question?
I know.
Go ahead, Terry.
Okay, I know it is, it is a little bit different test than our legacy test, ALDA, which sort, which did use like an overall scale score to, to do a proficiency cutoff. This one is more um of a, a profile that you must reach. So it's um a little bit different, but this particular task does follow the same um way that we've been measuring on the general ALTA 21. It does have fewer domain, within domain levels than the general ALTA 21, which is five, and this one is four. It is built on the standards for um English language proficiency that were developed for English learners with the most significant cognitive disabilities. So it's not, th- those standards were, they started with our general English language proficiency sta- standards, but they were modified, so it is set to a different set of standards as well.
Does this instrument look like a matrix then? Does it look like a matrix?
Um, kind of, it, it, it looks like, and I, I don't have a score report right now that I can pop up, but it looks like um very much broken down by the four language domains and how the students perform within those domains in order to reach an overall score of either, and here's where you see the blue emerging, the red progressing, and finally, the overall is proficient. The overall proficient is really based on how they did in reading, writing, and listening and speaking. So it's, it's a profile of, of performance.
Why does, why does my reaching proficiency in grade six, for example, have anything to do with I'm proficient in grade 12? I mean, could you, could you regress compared to your group, or compared to whatever you're testing?
Well, if you um, if you don't reach proficiency, of course, you are still in the EL program, and you continue to grade seven. So when you take the test in grade seven, you're gonna hopefully score proficient. There are, and I think if we move to the next slide, I'll show you the um the, there. So eat, there, the um cut scores for each grade level are within a grade band. So kindergarten really has its own form, and it has its own cut score set, grade one as well. In grades two through three, it, it is the same form, but the cuts are set at different levels as with four, five, six, eight. Nine, 12 is, is a little bit of a different animal, because in grades nine through 12, it's more about um, less about age sequence and more about um, you know, meeting uh graduation requirements and taking courses. So it is one form with one set of cuts. And then, um, but they all will have emerging, progressing, proficient, and they all will contain on the score report their modality, as well as their domain performance descriptors. And the modalities again are the receptive domains put together, so they derive a score from ri- reading and listening, and then the productive domains are the speaking and writing.
Can I jump in really quick? Um, this is Jay Pennington from the DE. Um, so a lot of really good questions, I mean, the, the test itself is just, it's like a, any test that you would take online, um, it delves into these, these four areas that Terry touched on, you know, reading, listening, speaking, et cetera. Um, uh, you know, a student would have to, uh, in any of these grade bands or, or, or grade levels, you know, get X number of items correct in that domain area. So let's say listening, you know, they respond X percent, and um I don't know the exact percentage of, of items that a student would need to get correct in order to be proficient, but basically, depending on how many they got right, they would be um, uh, achieve that particular level that, that Terry uh mentioned. So if they were proficient, they would be above the number of correct items uh in that area. And then they sort of take each of the, the different, those four domains together. Um, a- and then based on, you know, again, percent items correct in, in each of those domains to determine whether or not a student is proficient. I don't know if that helps as an explanation about um.
Are there different, Jay, are there different assessments, obviously, for each level? So K has, has an assessment tool, and then?
Yeah, the test is geared for kindergartners.
And two, three, is, is that the same test?
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move to the next slide. So at the end of the day, um, what we really wanna know is how these achievement levels impact student learning. So we, there are score reports that are developed that are expected to be shared with parents, and it, these um help parents and teachers understand the, the student's current level of performance and assist them in making decisions about the level and intensity of support in their English development program. So it provides quite a bit of information. And as we talked about earlier, one of the most important things is that an overall proficiency level determines whether or not students may exit the, the language services. So um, we use them for a lot of things, you, you can visit Jay's uh, I think it's Jay's, it's not really. It's the state's report card, which does show um more um specifically how students did in making progress from year to year, as well as finding the state's proficiency rates. So um, I encourage you to look that over as well. I think I, I may reach the end of my slides, but Jennifer, you may have one more.
Yes, uh, so just our recommendation is that the board adopts the achievement uh levels for the ALTA 21, the descriptors and the cut scores. There is more information uh in your board packet on page. And then our next slide is, are there any additional questions?
Questions and discussions on the board. Well, I read through the materials and we provided, I thought they did it. Uh, I put this, put well down in my notes, I thought it was thorough and glad to see other states participating. Um, and once again, it's isn't perfect, no, there's no perfect assessment, but it is important to have something established as far as something that educators and families and kids can understand how well they're doing. This may not be perfect, but I think it's pretty darn good.
I would move to the.
Second. Spin move by Cassie Cassandra. Second by Mary to approve the recommendation, and the recommendation is the cut, I believe, is that right? Yeah, recommendation of the, the state board adopt the alternate ALTA 21, my daily test scores and achievement levels determination. We have other questions or discussions. Eric, now we'll vote, those who favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, same sign. Carrie, thank you, Jennifer, and others.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, the next item on the agenda is lunch and board reports, we have instructions for lunch.
I think it's set up outside.
Set up outside, all right, well, we will break until 12:30. We have our lunch break, we'll have just for the teachers.
Right now, we, that's why the, that's saying we need to look at uh English learners and uh the struggles that they have, it's getting them to uh proficiency. Think it's a huge thing, and uh compound that uh with the language skills. It's a, it's a real gigantic list, I think, for all of us, so um, talking to teachers is really important, I think.
I, I mean, I don't have anything really to.
I, I mean, I don't have anything really to report. I would just say that um really important that folks. Help promote the uh STEM teacher nomination, so we can recognize um our educators out there. Thought I had something else to say, but I don't remember, so.
It always comes back to me.
She'll be like, wait, I remember.
I have one thing I follow up on. Last month, I talked about the Kennedy Foundation in Dubuque wants to. Get a dyslexia tutoring facility in Dubuque. And collaborate with other stakeholders in the community, including the existing schools, obviously. Uh, they asked me to create a nonprofit corporation and to get it taxed exempt. Um, they're gonna start fundraising to create this facility and staff it. And get it off the ground and stabilized and then have. Other people continue it so that there'd be a tutoring facility in Dubuque for dyslexic uh students. Um, that doesn't exist now. People generally, the closest one is a C R A. So that's kind of exciting.
Sounds exciting, it sounds like a little work.
It's not that, well, yeah.
So Community College Council update, um, we met yesterday and covered a lot of information. I brought some things to pass along to the board to share along. Um, we got an update on the um college, Community College Tuition and Fees Report. There was a three point six percent increase in F Y S twenty twenty three. Uh, the average tuition uh per credit hour is one ninety eight fifteen this year. So um, but lots of great information available, particularly on student outcomes. So a couple of things for everyone to write down if you wanna go out and really get great student information. IowaStudentOutcomes dot com is where a lot of the power in community college student information is at. I know so many of you came with us to the Community College Trustees um luncheon this year. And we're really impressed by the conversation. So if you really wanna have your finger on what's uh what's happening in our community colleges and with our students. Please visit that. I'll pass this around for all of you to take a look. Um, just also wanna give a reminder of the Community College Conference, which is happening November twenty eighth through the thirtieth. Um, here in Des Moines. So if you have an opportu- opportunity to attend, we'd love to have you there. This is the first time this conference is ever happening. So um, this is uh the great opportunity again to immerse yourself in conversation. So if you want more information on that, let me know. I will make sure you have the link. Um, I did also this month have the opportunity, actually uh, perhaps just last week. To attend the ribbon cutting for the Horizon Sciences Academy Charter School. Uh, they had a wonderful turnout there and the school was absolutely beautiful, much like this. Um, it's in the Franklin Junior High School in Des Moines. So uh, the high school that, or the former school that's being repurposed, but everything in the school was brand new. So it was just neat to see the classrooms all refurbished and with technology. And to see the kids in the classroom, so it was great to be there for that. Um, and then personally, I have a new project, I should, I guess personally slash professionally. Have a new project that I'm working on with United Way of Central Iowa and their workforce, uh their integrated workforce strategies. Helping um update the pathway for childcare provider, uh para educator. And then educator. So not inventing the pathway, but actually helping design and overlay for the pathway. For um policymakers and nonprofit organizations and funders. Understand where there are challenges in the pathways. So how can those organizations and policymakers help support the pathway in new ways? To make it easier for people to be successful in the profession. So.
Nathan Peterson and I did this with the chief of grand with A and G. Um, we had a, I don't know, perspective of how, I mean, what we have started to do. Um, we had a really great discussion, spent about an hour and a half with the chief and the board chair. Um, one a lot, I think, I served on that board, it's probably been a minor one of the work in that area. But Nathan was not all that to do with A and G, but they knew souls. Um, I've been very informative. They guided us through a super and then speeding, which would be all of the, the um. The type or the school districts that they serve. And I thought you and Nathan and I should have taken a look at those dates coming up. And um, we were very excited that everybody would be interested in coming and would love to do this now. So that they could come and put together one or two or three topics that they thought was important to them in the districts that they serve.
Um, I got invited to go to a performance that is being held at the um Omaha Orpheum. And it's also being taught, I don't know if any of you like R S V to that, but it's about the importance of music education within school systems. And so that is happening um just next week on the twentieth. So I'm excited for that.
I think I just wanna touch on is I'm still uh. Oh, a little bit concerned, maybe unwarranted concern about the recommendations coming from the. From the commission that's studying boards committees and all that um. I'm not sure what the details are. It's nice to know, obviously, if your, if your committee is being, or board is being recommended. For for termination, that's pretty clear. But if it's to be modified, if it's to be combined or changed, there's. Uh, I don't have any information, let's see if something new that you can share or or not. But I guess what I'm concerned about is that the recommendations would do it then this month. And I'm not sure what change, modify, merged means for uh the Community College Council or or this board. Um, it'd be nice to know what that is so that we know that is this a good thing to support? Or not to support or to have questions. I'm kind of at a full loss. I understand if you're going to review what you're doing, and I don't have any problem with reviewing what you're doing. Uh, but you're gonna be making recommendations. There should be some rationale and some purpose and some context as far as why this is being recommended. If it's a matter of efficiency or that's one thing. Is it a matter of effectiveness? I don't know. I'm waiting for clarification and I'm sure they all will find out at the same time when it occurs and.
And John, I listened in on the public hearing as well, and um, I I agree, I think it's a little disappointing that. Um, I mean, I understand with public comments, you know, not engaging dialogue or whatever. But I just think the information provided was, it's so, well, limited. Um, you know, one document with a couple of, there were some findings and then there's some recommendations. And then here's the spreadsheet that listed the, the board or commission and and kind of what the recommendation was. And it was um, you know, listening to some of the, the um folks talk about the work. I will say especially of some of the professional um, the committees that were the, doing some of the help with licensing. And regulatory activities and advising the state. I mean, to me, they're providing a very important um, you know, input that as subject matter experts. You know, and I think uh some of the commissions were, um, there was some concern that they'd been called or. I'll say convened or appointed but never met. Well, that I understand, you know, what's the purpose if you've got a committee and they're not meeting and they're not doing anything? You know, obviously, organizations like the State Board of Ed, obviously, we're meeting and and we're providing input. And you know, we're acting as we should. So I think there's all different levels of um activity going on. And you're right, it deserves some scrutiny at some point, but help us understand what that process is. And then how we can be part of it in terms of informing what it is that we do and how we see our role. Because we probably also have some ideas on, right, ways things could get better and people on all of these boards and commissions. And so I agree with you, and I would just say I think it's important that um the citizens of the state have an opportunity. To engage on these types of boards and commissions. And so um hopefully, this process does not remove those opportunities. Because I think sometimes parts of the state feel that the power is in Des Moines. And and um we need to make sure that folks have an opportunity to engage where they are and where they're. So the only context that I would add um is that, as you know, the committee is an independent statutory established committee. So I don't have any additional information about its draft recommendations. But a- as you all know, the recommendations are in draft form. And my understanding is that the intent to put them out in draft form, but to receive that public comment that you were referencing in that public statement. Which would receive via the public comment in person session at the Capitol. And then, of course, it's still being received by email. Um, but my understanding is that the committee will put forward final recommendations at the end of this month. So time is of the essence. I know many of you have certainly commented, thank you for your feedback. Um, but if you have any further comment, time is of the essence.
It's hard to make comments at the public, there even, you don't know what you're. So I submitted a public comment, I guess, sure.
I do wanna add one thing when we visited with um John Spear from Grandpa D A. We just said, you know, talks about the world and you're receiving that. He said, I know that there are a lot of changes at the state level and there are likely to be changes in the A B system. And I think there are nine A and As right now. Um, he said, if there's an opportunity for, for the Department of Education to come to A and G chief. And say, hey, we need you to reorganize your files or provide us input on how. He said, we really like a pertinent discussion ahead of the discussion. Instead of having it announced that there's going to be some changes of A and G structure. So to your point, I think other um agencies that affiliate with you, that happen in that are, I think, with this.
Well, this committee is just making recommendations. Obviously, it's gonna take legislative action before anything happens. So there'll be, there'll be time for additional input to maybe clarify what to comment on or not to comment on. But anyway.
I had a question about that. So um, you know, I think that as a state board, we tend to like um engage. Strong advocacy in terms of legislative priorities or things like that. I maybe talk to them and have, you know, but any in terms of. But I mean, something that maybe is a legislative change that directly impacts state code that would impact the state of education. Where do we stand on that, I guess, is my question. As a board, I mean, as a board, is there something that we need to do as a board um to, to get, I mean, to come to a decision? And do something about that or, or I don't know if we can or.
As far as this particular issue?
No, just on this, I mean, I think this is the only one that actually directly impacts the state board of education and the code that authorizes our. So when that comes, I mean, if it does, which it may, based on recommendations. And then we probably could go up and say a change to a feature of that. Um, if that was something that we maybe were opposed to or agreed with. I mean, is that something that as a state board, we would maybe talk to numbers? Cause they've never really had, done anything like that, I mean, like as a state board kind of. I mean, we used to have like receptions with them and say that, but not really, like about one issue, right? But then again, there hasn't been any issues where that directly impacted the state board of education.
But they ultimately recommend they not be.
Yeah, exactly. We don't know.
But that's a, it's a good point, maybe as things kind of evolve here, they're handling.
Alright, I think we're ready to move on. Are you guys ready?
That's a good one. I'm happy to open it up. Uh, and just to underscore the importance of this conversation. And so appreciate uh Dr. Brianna and and Sir, uh, Sury being here. That we all know that unlocking the chapter and both begin, the grading begins with literacy. Because in third grade, you stop wanting to read, and as you know, you begin to learn. Um, so I wanna let us, let us set and begin this conversation with some data. Uh, in Iowa, thirty three percent of fourth graders are reaching ninth grade level proficiency every day. We also know that nine out of ten students who don't complete high school were struggling readers in the third grade. According to the Casey Foundation, the Federal Bus Research on the Importance of Literacy. And Georgetown found that individuals who don't complete high school are not eligible for ninety percent of jobs. We also know that seventy percent of depressed rated individuals cannot read above the fourth grade level. Every child is the risk deserve to receive instruction and support that empower them to read in third grade. And this work evidence faith literacy in direction and in religion is truly in student lives. And that is why it's a top priority for the administration, for the department, for me and the army and the team. Um, so with that, I will pass it to Dr. Brianna to introduce the the folks for the next day.
Great. Well, thank you very much, Dr. Anderson, and board members for allowing us time today to talk about the science of reading. And to uh what we're gonna present today, and I have a team member with me, but I also have a team member virtually. Uh, so it's gonna be a high representation, but what we're going to share with you today is some data. Uh, about Iowa data as well as some other states' data. Uh, we're also gonna talk about uh the science of reading and just really round you and make sure that you have an understanding of what, what we mean by that. As we move forward, talk about what could our next steps possibly be as leaders collectively? Uh, in in this area. So it is my pleasure first to introduce you to Greg Feldman. He is virtual, so if we could connect with him. He is a, a member of the School Improvement Bureau and he is an administrative consultant. Uh, other members of the team are from the Bureau of Learning, Supports and Strategies. So we have cross bureaus in this work and have collaborated extensively on this. But Greg Feldman is uh with us and is going to talk about reading achievement in Iowa, uh, the early grades kindergarten group really great.
Yeah, great, thank you. Um, and as 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 Kim said, this is uh, my name's Greg Feldman here at the department. And I was asked to share a little bit of data. Um, I have just one slide this afternoon, which is, I think, a first for for me anyways. Um, we uh wanted to share some early literacy data related to gather through the early literacy implementation or two seventy nine sixty eight. Um, that all Iowa public schools have been uh, uh, working on and and engaged with the past seven or eight years. Uh, so the slide you see here is just like I said, a a single slide, and these are data pulled. Uh, based on the fall, winter, and spring early literacy screening data. This is not I S A F. This is another, another data source we have on early literacy achievement and and proficiency. Um, as part of the early literacy legislations, all public schools are required to screen um their K three public students. Some up to K six, fall, winter, and spring to identify those students who are, who are at risk. Um, for not meeting later, later outcomes as uh, for example, end of third grade uh targets. Um, so all schools are required to use an approved uh assessment that the state provides. Um, and these are all validated empirically based um assessments that are are found to to measure reading achievement. Um and these are all validated empirically based assessments that are are found to to measure reading achievement. Um and like I said, to identify those students who were at risk. Uh the data you see on the on the screen now are those pulled from um Panorama Student Success. That's our our data platform. Um but it pulls together aggregates uh the screening data for those K three students. Most students use FastBridge, the FastBridge assessments. There's a few, probably four to five percent of the school districts that use some other measures. They're they're validated um uh appropriate for the use. Um we've aggregated those together into the the screen you see here. And this graph uh depicts the percentage of students who are at or above benchmark um or at low risk of of not meeting later later outcomes. You can see we have five years, the luxury of five years of data to look to look at over the period of time here. And the the numbers which bounce, I'm going to take some similarities here, but between about sixty to seventy, sixty to seventy percent of our students are are at or above benchmark or sixty to seventy percent of the students are low risk of not meeting um later outcomes. The flip side of that coin, of course, would be about um thirty to forty percent are at some risk or high risk of of not meeting later outcomes. Um and this doesn't mean that the the students over time, you can see it's relatively flat. Um the benchmarks or those targets increase from fall to winter, winter to spring. Um this just shows a relative achievement levels of students in relation to those benchmarks or those targets that do increase fall, winter to spring. They remain consistent over time. For example, uh the eighteen nineteen benchmarks are the same as the twenty two twenty three. So they're similar, not similar, they're identical um targets across years. Um but within the year from fall to winter to spring, that that target moves up as as one might expect. Um so there's a couple of different ways that one can interpret this. One would be um just a level. Where are we in relation to to the target? Um and you can see zero to a hundred percent um is the range at which students can fall. And we have, again, as indicated, about sixty to seventy percent of students. It bounces around a little bit. You can see, you can see that on the on the screen. Um but about sixty to seventy percent of students who are at or above targets. Um most of the researchers out there, the the writers in in the field say the goal is about eighty percent. If you could have eighty percent of your your students who are at or above targets, given high quality core instruction, then we should be able to meet the needs of that remaining twenty percent um with targeted focused interventions. So that's one way to interpret it would just be in relation to that, again, eighty percent um goal. Of course, our goal is to have a hundred percent of our students at or above benchmark within to meet the, as far as core universal instruction goes, the 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 number often uh used is eighty percent. The second way we can look at this data is um kind of trend, performance over time. Um both within an academic year from fall to winter to spring, so that'd be the the blue to the orange to the gray uh bars. But also, as I indicated, we have the luxury of of data over time. We've got five years to look at how students um performances changed um for the better or 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 worse over over that time. And we can see within school year, they're relatively relatively similar, fall, winter and spring. Of course, there's the spring twenty twenty data are missing because of the pandemic. Uh but we can make some inferences based on uh the trends year to year. Um there are slow steady increases, um just one or two points uh between years. Um not too dramatic, but there is a a small general trend upwards, yet still relatively flat and still below that um eighty percent target that that is often used for for core um universal instruction. So really, that that's that's the um folks can can kind of look at that and make um draw their own conclusions. But that's the two two big uh conclusions come to my mind is in relation to the eighty percent target. And then the relatively um uh small uh trend upwards, but generally flat um year to year. Um so that is it. That's a that's a a flyby of of a lot of data that data aggregated um here in one one spot. I believe, Wanda, I'm going to turn it to yourself or another uh colleague here?
I think I'm on the first grade.
Okay.
All right. Good afternoon and and thank you for letting our team uh join you today. Um the information that Director Snow, Kim and Greg uh shared with us really paints a picture of the need for our focus on literacy learning. Uh the good news is we know the way to do it and that's what we're going to be sharing with you today. And the other part of the good news is that we have a great team to do that. And that team is made up of uh myself, Tom Woodham, the bureau chief. Uh Wanda Sterry is our dyslexia science of reading consultant. Lee Belleville is our secondary literacy consultant. And April Gosalink Limkey is our elementary consultant. And with that, I will kick it over to Lee.
Thank you, Tom. So we're going to start out with the definition of science of reading. And the literacy team met this year, including external experts. And we did reach consensus on the definition of the science of reading. So for today, it's it's pretty brief and it's just over two slides. I'm going to read the definition aloud. And our team will then provide further details to elaborate. The science of reading is a vast body of research from multiple fields. That is education, linguistics, psychology, neuroscience, and studies that explain how individuals learn to read and the practices most effective in maximizing student literacy outcomes. This body of research informs the what and how of teaching literacy, reading and writing. It also informs the focus of teacher preparation programs, the instructional materials district select, and the professional learning most likely to impact teaching and learning.
So as a literacy team, um there we know that there are many models for reading that we can follow. We're going to talk today about Scarborough's rope. Scarborough's rope um is helpful, helping conceptualize the cognitive processes. When we think about what is involved for students in reading. This was developed by Hollis Scarborough. And um she is a cognitive developmental psychologist and she um it was first published in two thousand one. She developed this rope after years of studying both the language side and the reading side of language um and trying to figure out what processes were involved when a chap, when a person's reading for both typical and atypical individuals. So the model um is really important because in a, as we think about a person's brain and what goes into that skilled reading and therefore comprehension, um what do we need to consider? And that's why this model is very important. One thing that you might notice is it's very complex in a person's brain. What happens is very complex. And there are two areas in the person's brain that work together for reading. One area is language comprehension and the other area is word recognition. And the interesting thing is is that these areas in the brain are woven together so that a child can understand what they're reading or a person in general. If any one strand of this rope is impaired or isn't working properly, then that will impact the skill breeding in the end. And that's why this rope is really a great model for us to follow. The other thing to know is that if one area is impacted, likely it will spread to other areas. And so then you have multiple deficit deficits that you're trying to work on to help the child to read. Um as a literacy team, and we also met with external experts, we landed on the rope as our best model as we talked about the science of reading to use um so that we can really understand those cognitive components. And as we move forward and we're looking at children um and trying to understand their deficits, we have a a lot of um areas that we can look at to understand what might be going on, where the breakdown might be in their ability to read. So that's the what and the how, as you can see, for for learning to read is on the screen. And the how is broken down, we're going to speak, broken down for us into three major areas, as you can see. One is systematic and cumulative instruction. The other is explicit instruction and the third is full language integration. I'm going to be speaking about each of those. Okay? So when we think about um systematic and cumulative instruction, the reason that's so important for us to know is because as we're looking at a school system and a system of reading, we need to be very cognizant of what we're teaching the kids and in what order. So that we make sure that the kids receive instruction in every single skill that they need um so that they're successful with their reading. It's also important that the instruction is explicit. And what that means is that the teacher is using very descriptive language with the kids and they're following a sequence so that the kids are building their knowledge and what they're learning today only uses what they've already mastered. So what I'm learning today as as a child, I've mastered everything in addition to this new concept. And it's being taught to me in a very descriptive way so I can understand. Finally, the full language integration is that you're doing this in a way that's both synthetic and analytic um through reading, writing, speaking and listening. And you just heard that on the alpha, how important those four areas are. And that's very true. You want kids to be speaking, listening, writing and listening and all of that. The synthetic part of that um is that is where the you're um teaching kids that letters like C and H make the ch sound. And then they're using that sound um to read words. The analytic part is that the teacher is giving a word like chip and their kids are breaking it down into the sounds like chip and writing it. And and all of that together really engages the brain of the child so that they're able to best learn these this new skill that they're being taught for that day. And so it's through the what, the cognitive processes and the how, the teaching pedagogy, that we really can help our kids um succeed in reading.
Okay, so I'm going to dig into a little bit deeper of what the science of reading is. The science of reading is converging evidence from decades of scientifically based research proving how students learn to read. This evidence comes from cognitive psychology, how the brain mentally processes information, language use, problem solving and reasoning, developmental psychology, how individuals grow, change and adapt, and neuroscience, how the brain physically processes information in order for students to learn how to read. The science of reading is ensuring explicit systematic sequential instruction and phonological awareness and phonics. Explicit teaching is clearly explained and defined. Within systematic instruction, lesson procedures and routines are easy for students to follow along with and corrective feedback is given immediately and throughout the lesson. Sequential instruction ensures the skills are taught in a particular order, simple to complex, and follow a scope and sequence for vertical alignment across grade levels. The science of reading is teaching high frequency words according to their phonics patterns. For example, teaching words by short vowel sounds, vowel consonant E, vowel teams, digraphs, et cetera. The science of reading is teaching irregular words explicitly. For example, with the word said, S and D make their regular sounds. However, AI says eh in this word instead of A. So this requires explicit teaching and opportunities for students to practice decoding and encoding or reading and writing this new word. The science of reading is providing early readers with opportunities to read decodable texts that include already learned phonics patterns. Early readers are given text they can successfully decode because they have been explicitly taught the phonics patterns and allowing them to focus on the meaning of the text rather than decoding. Thank you, April. We've shared information about the science of reading. So now we want to take a moment to share examples with you to illustrate why the science of reading is so important. And this is to also help our state moving forward. So Catherine Truitt, North Carolina State Superintendent of Public Instruction, shared K three data demonstrating success after implementing the Read to Achieve program in North Carolina, which focuses on aligning teaching practices with the science of reading. So if you look at the chart, we have first, the first three variations of green bars in each set of six. So if you look at the gray levels, we have Kinder, Grade One, Grade Two and Grade Three. So with those three variations of the green on each set of six, those are indicating the difference between the beginning of the year, mid-year and end of the year for other states and users outside of North Carolina, which are scoring at or above the benchmark utilizing DIBELS. And DIBELS is an assessment that measures the efficacy of literacy instruction and programs. The three variations of light gray to dark gray bars, which would be the last three that are on the set of six for each of those grade levels. Those are the ones that are following the growth during that same timeline from the beginning of the year, mid-year and the end of the year, specifically for North Carolina across grades K three. So the data shows that students have shown substantial improvement and outpaced others. If you think back to the initial data that Greg shared in Iowa, we're not demonstrating growth in the same manner. I'd also like to highlight, um after speaking with Catherine from North Carolina, that they are also ensuring that educators are receiving professional learning around the science of reading and they're utilizing high quality instructional materials with evidence-based practices. And then we do have other states who are also demonstrating success, including Alabama and Mississippi. So April's going to share some information with you about Alabama. Thanks, Lee. So the Alabama Comprehensive Assessment Program, ACAP, is administered to grades two through eight in the spring. In twenty twenty, Alabama started the Alabama Reading Initiative, also referred to as ARI. This this initiative was a K twelve comprehensive strategy to bring the best research on reading instruction and the best teaching practices to classrooms in Alabama. The primary method was intensive research-based professional development for teachers. Alabama State has seen a significant increase in reading achievement since implementing ARI. As you can see from the graph, prior to ARI in two thousand sixteen, only thirty seven percent of third grade students in Alabama were proficient in reading. In two thousand seventeen, thirty eight percent were proficient. And in two thousand nineteen, only twenty eight percent of their third grade students were proficient. In twenty twenty one, after implementing ARI, the student scores rose to seventy seven percent proficiency. Then in two thousand twenty two, they had seventy eight proficiency, seventy eight percent proficiency, and were only one of two states that improved in reading that year. And in two thousand twenty three, third grade students were at seventy six percent proficiency.
I'm going to share the results of Mississippi. And um the data that you see on the screen started actually before this in two thousand thirteen, when the Mississippi Legislature passed a literacy-based proclamation act. And that was a an act to ensure that all of their kids would be able to read by the end of grade three. So that happened back in two thousand thirteen. And then as at as part of that act, the depart, their Department of Education um also put in a early screening system like we have in Iowa. And when they put that in place, um they really did so in the intention that K through three would be the years of prevention and intervention. So that by the time they got to that end of third grade, when they took this assessment, which is a different assessment just for third grade, um they would see results and have the kids um on track. At the, in two thousand fifteen, they included professional development for all of their teachers. It may have started a little bit before that, but that's when they really started happening. And you can see where their scores were in two thousand fifteen. And what they put in place was letters training for their educators. And that information came from um a twenty twenty, January of twenty twenty article in the newspaper Mississippi Today that said that more than fifteen thousand of their teachers were trained in letters during this time. Okay? And so. And so what's important to know about this data is that level three, which is the orange and the gray, which is called proficient. If you, as a student, are in the orange level three or proficient, you're promoted to grade four. And then if you're in the blue, which is levels one and two, they have a process in place where you you might be promoted or you might be retained, but you you start entering into this process. So you can see as they're putting this letters training in place, their data, as you look at that blue, which are the kids who might go into that process of being retained or promoted, has really gone down over the years. And so that's what's exciting about this data is that they put this in place, invested in their teachers, and and they saw the results. That's why we are sharing that data.
One I'd point on is it's often called the Mississippi Miracle. And specifically, Mississippi went from being ranked second worst in the nation with fourth grade reading and made twenty first in the nation in twenty two over a ten year period. So the in comparison to other states, the results were very significant.
So what's next? It will take a community to prioritize the science of reading in order to reach all of our students and significantly impact student achievement. But it is attainable. Creating partnerships between families and educators will impact student outcomes as well as ensuring professional learning and instruction is aligned with the science of reading in our schools. Aligning coursework with the science of reading in our Iowa teacher preparation programs will equip teachers with the skills needed for all students to read by third grade. Our role at the Iowa Department of Education is to provide leadership and resources supporting the implementation of the science of reading in schools, at home and in teacher prep programs. Academic excellence is our north star, and it is through literacy that we will meet this goal. And with that, time permitting, we are happy to take any questions.
Do we know how many school districts in the state of Iowa currently are are teaching phonics-based reading or following the science of reading curriculum?
We don't. We do have it on our desk, but that we're asking, going to ask all districts to indicate to us what their instructional materials are for literacy that they're using. So we'll have a better sense of that later this year. We'll be able to answer that question soon.
Thank you.
So all teachers ought to have a diagnosis, reading difficulties. Okay, so then who does the diagnosis? If I'm a doctor, I go in and I see the doctor. The nurse can tell me a few things, but I go and see the doctor and tell them what's wrong with me. So how do we do that? I mean, then we have to start by knowing where you're at before we can help you. Right? So matter of the instruction here, what kind of instruction do I need? What kind of support system do I need? So who's doing that? And is that ubiquitous in Iowa?
Okay, so our fast screening, our fast early childhood screening is like the nurse taking your temperature, say, yep, something's wrong. You do need that. You need, do need that deeper work, deeper dive. And in districts, group is part of the AEA, they then have choice as to how they do that diagnostic. I can speak to the districts. I came from an ADA before I came to the department. The districts I worked with, we had certain diagnostic tools. Then that we gave the kids who were below benchmark, the ones who showed that fever. And to try to figure out what exactly was going on. It could be phonemic awareness. It could be a phonics skill. It could be a language area that we were diagnosing. But those strands, we tried to figure out like, where's the breakdown? And then we would think about what the instruction is.
So so then the nurse informs the doctor, this is what you have to focus on for this kid to be successful. Okay, we've diagnosed it, figured out what's wrong. Okay, so now
That goes to the future.
Prescription or whatever that we had to give you to make this work. So how is that working across all the districts in Iowa? I mean, is that getting done? Or is this what we're talking about? We're going to implement something new now that that we haven't done? Because the last ten years, I've sat in this meeting here over and over and over, we're getting there, we're getting there, but we're not there. And I'm asking why, you know, we've been trying to focus on this thing. Help me understand.
Mike, can I ask you a question maybe a little bit of a different way? I am an action-oriented person, so I love seeing this. And I don't think anybody in this room would disagree that reading shouldn't be a priority for the work that we do and what we support. So as I look at this slide and see potential next steps, I'd like to just take the potential off and say, what are the next steps? Like, what do we need to focus on in order to elevate their reading scores in Iowa? So I think that's what
That's part of what I'm saying.
Yeah, where do we go?
But yeah.
Yeah, I think ten years ago, you know, the last ten years, the the putting that universal screener in place was a great first step. And school districts across the state are using a universal screener to determine that baseline and to and to identify students who are struggling or who potentially
And that's happening in the vast, vast majority of our school districts right now.
Yes, it is.
Go ahead and finish that.
A screener is required by every school district and the majority use that. So that was something that Greg shared. And there's a few others using a different screener. So now we need to take the next step, like you said. That isn't going to solve our problems. You saw on that graph that it's been stagnant. And there hasn't been that incremental growth over the years or the tremendous growth like North Carolina, Mississippi, Alabama have had that we shared also. What they did, they implemented the science of reading. They invested in the teachers.
So the science of reading is in the program versus practices?
Science of reading is that vast body of research. To go back to those first few slides.
Okay, so it's not
But there, but we know what we're looking for in programs. So by using our knowledge of that vast body of research, we can say, in order to have a solid program, it should have these components.
Okay, so with our current fastest testing, how does that stack up? What we're looking for, was it a rope diagram? Are we, is our fastest that can give us information that would pick apart those strands of rope?
No, the the fast is like that temperature saying there's a problem. But then the diagnostic assessments, which is on top of fast that schools use, are where they figure out what the problem is, the rope, what, where's the problem?
So it sounds like to me, we're not sure. So I mean, in the last, I mean, I'm looking like, I mean, we've been hearing about, and this has been a priority, I know, in state board and departments for since I've gone to the board since two thousand fourteen, since the incident, you know, the the law that, you know, and proficient. So I mean, I feel like that we were working on, I think that we got to where there was a fastest assessment. So they would, you know, would be able to kind of see if students were falling behind or where they kind of needed things. But then I feel like teachers maybe didn't have the tools in their toolkit to be able to complete them. So it was a universal, you know, kind of identifier and you kind of identified them. But then it's like teachers were kind of like, well, I don't know what to do. How do I bring them up to be proficient? Or how do I bring them up to the rest of the class? So I I feel like that may have been an issue. I don't know if that's still an issue, but I felt like maybe that was an issue maybe a couple of years ago. So I don't know where we are. I'm sure the pandemic had, but I mean, so. I think at a high level, to address a gap in high quality professional development, which many districts themselves are going, the state is they need investment in professional development. We do not have that, make sure that RFP process yet, but of course, if the screener was the first step, a second step is providing all school districts and schools with access to high quality professional development that aligns with science and evidence-based practices.
If we can go back a couple of slides to one of the states we've seen that. If we can go to, let's go to Alabama. Yeah. I think this is what's amazing to me is they went from a proficiency score of twenty eight and twenty nineteen to seventy seven in twenty twenty one. So in two years' time, and assuming twenty twenty isn't on there because of of the pandemic, right? So they flipped a lever in there. And I'm I'm being super simplistic when I say they flipped a lever between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty one. But if we could make that significant of a shift in our scores in two years, which of course we don't have that big of a gap to fill. I mean, that's that's my question of like, how do we, you know, taking that step of professional development, is there something else we need to be thinking about? Thinking bigger about to be, to make that shift? I'm just thinking of the superintendent's words this morning of what do we need to wait on?
Well, do you
Or why wait?
Dramatic shift that kind of races red flags. What else happened? Twenty eighty, seventy seven, was it the same test? Cut scores?
He asked if it was the same.
Yeah, that's, that was the same assessment. So what happened over the course of those two years within that state was two different things. Number one, they required all of their teachers, they mandated to have them trained in the science of reading. So when we go back to that rope, that they were fully competent in all of the different areas, know what to look for in in successful readers and students who struggle with reading. And then they cut that or coupled that with high quality curricular materials. So purchasing materials that align with the science of reading, that align with what scientists say is how students learn to read. So it was kind of a, it was kind of two big things that happened over the course of two years.
Did they change or cut scores at all?
No.
But to your point, I think other states have experienced much more gradual achievements over time, depending on the universal ability of implementation of professional development or high quality instructional materials or
But if this is as, I'm not saying this is simple, okay, I'm a layperson. But if this is get high quality materials, teach educators the science of reading, and it can be accomplished in two years, okay, I move that we do that. I'm really not trying to be a smartass. So why aren't we doing that?
Yeah, where are the other resources that are required?
It's not that simple. It's not that simple. We're starting at sixty, not seven, not twenty eight.
Yeah, but still, we want to be
I just, I'm sort of like John, I'm kind of cynical about that. And you know, the Mississippi miracle, didn't, you all read the same thing I did. It was, I don't know, it was Wall Street Journal or something a week ago. They were still fifty out of fifty on some other education ranking. You know, K to twelve. So I mean, they're just really good readers, but nothing else. I don't know. I mean, I, I'm more interested in what can we do in Iowa? Where things have been good and successful, how can we improve that? And if it means those two things, we should advocate for those two things. I mean, I don't see how you could even train people in the science of reading in two years.
There are actually integrated professional development system in place that's available to us. That actually is a junior process.
Right, but I mean, everybody, it must have been everybody. I mean, it's not the money now. Now it's the logistics of actually doing it.
Well, I'm not, I'm not focused on the potential next step, item number four. It, to me, it's a future prep program, so we can supply all of the additional teacher and fund them to learn that this fundamental science of reading now. But this is where we really need to hit at home, because every teacher should have that toolbox available to them K twelve. Because we know, even though it's seventy percent or whatever it is in our state, we still see students in junior high school who still can't, who still start home reading, right? So every class becomes reading, to your point. So that to me is really important as well as professional development. But I'm with you. I I am skeptical a little bit. But what we're doing now is producing the results that we want to see in improving reading scores in Iowa. So let's pull that lever, lever, level, lever, I'm sorry, and tell me why we aren't doing it now.
You know, the the thing that, thing that I want to get out there too is, is there has to be a sense of urgency. Like this needs to be done right now, not another ten years. You know, when I'm in the grade, guys, cease to be done now. And if we have the skill set, or we have teachers who have the skill set and are able to facilitate that information, then we have to do it. But it has to be done now, not in five years. Has to be a sense of urgency among us all. It has to be a priority. I mean, nothing could be more important than education to teach kids.
Right, I agree. And and really, I don't think you can ever measure this. But anecdotally, as a dad, as a grandpa, having been on school boards longer than I can remember, it's about a love of reading. It's it's about, I mean, I I don't, you know, now I sound like my dad, okay? But you know, I mean, those children who who see modeling of behavior or who are read to or who who participate in that from the earliest of ages, it's my experience, they're probably proficient. Now, it might be socioeconomic or a lot of other outside reasons. But I I think, I don't know how you measure that, but that's, that's, that's got to be a part of this somehow.
Part of the science shows about thirty percent of kids can actually learn to read without this explicit instruction. That's what what really makes the difference is this explicit instruction and having the teacher be knowledgeable about what they're seeing, the student with the performance. So that they're able to move the student forward. And that's really the PD place, is having that depth of knowledge as a teacher. So that you're able to understand what you're seeing this, the student do and know what the next step is for that child. And that's where the scope and sequence and the explicit instruction, that's where all of that intertwines to help our kids.
So what are the highest flying states using for their reading? I don't want to aspire to, oh, let's look at forty eight percent proficient. What are the highest flying states doing?
So the states that are reading the most in preference, the trend is the science of reading. So that
The Alabama and the Mississippi.
Alabama, North Carolina is articulated. And I think you you saw on the initial slide that Greg showed that our reading scores remain stagnant throughout the duration of that assessment. And then for me, in nineteenth administration, we were middle of the pack. So they're they're, as states are improving, we are remaining stagnant in our reading scores. So I want to ensure that we are implementing what we know works. So that all children have high quality instruction.
I'm not disagreeing. We need to do something different. I just want to make sure we're doing the right thing. Because this is a big deal. If you're gonna, if we're gonna invest in RFPs, give grants and do lots of focus as far as PD with teachers and staff and get parents involved. I just want to make sure we're going down the right path. And that's why I'm, I'll be devil's advocate for a while, because I think, oh, it's gonna be helpful sometime now. But I'm also interested in knowing, what are we currently doing? Are there some districts in Iowa that are showing growth? And so what are they doing? Are they doing the science of reading? Or what are other states doing? Not arguing against the rope philosophy of the science of reading. I just want to figure that the next thing that we push out is the most accurate thing, the best thing I will do for our kids.
I believe that the research and shows that this is what's needed, which is what the science of reading is. But also then if you couple that with those who have implemented, it also shows that it works. The states that have done a concerted effort Have done a concerted effort towards that type of instruction, they have shown that it works. So I. Confidence is very high that this is the correct way, um, to teach reading. And if you look at the organizations, professional organizations such as, um, the International Dyslexia Association. Um, the reading league several have, have shown that this is the correct way to teach reading. So, um, or what kids need.
Well, back to my earlier point, understanding what districts are currently doing in the state for reading instruction and what those scores look like. Um, and to your question, is who's doing it well and who's not, because we know they're not all doing it from the science of reading. Right? Whole language, this is all the, the reading of us, right? Um, and getting back to basics and what works. Not for all students, because even if, I think Tom said earlier, if we can get them to seventy percent, we know that. Or everyone at seventy percent, we know that we can have interventions that bring them up to.
I think eighty percent.
Right, you were eighty percent, I'm sorry. Yes, yes.
So the question would be, what is the board can we do? To see that this is happening in every district, teaching the science, you know, and word of education. How do we raise the alarm? How do we sound the alarm? How do we, um, encourage other districts? But what impact can we get? Or are we just wasting our time talking about it?
I think that's a great segue to the work session that is going to be the next, uh, today, the rest of today and tomorrow morning. Because that's exactly what we're gonna have conversations about is, uh, talk about the mission or vision of the board, but then get into some goals and objectives setting. And what are you going to do? And what are the priorities? And I think this. You know, based on your conversation, I think this is a great priority, one of, one of the priorities that you could focus on and have that conversation.
So I have a question. Okay, so I guess, you know, with Alabama, two years, right? So, um. Within two years, you said that they have intensive professional development program, right? And it takes two years. So within two years, the scores went up. The program is two years. So that means that while teachers are learning, that scores are going up. Is that, and my point.
Of it is implementation.
Okay.
So it's not isolated learning, it's taking that information back to the classroom and implementing with your students. Um, the teachers are doing that in conjunction with their learning. So the kids are getting it right.
So it's like real time?
Yeah.
Okay, which is great. But then there's also something on here about partnering with Iowa families. So I'm always interested in what that looks like. Because I have a son who's in first grade right now and is very very now, uh, for some reason I know he's like a great reader, which is wonderful, but you know, so I don't feel like. I mean, we read every single night, you know, or not every single night, we try to. Um, I'm, you know, I'm always looking for ways to kind of expose them to new things, you know, and like, can we just start reading Harry Potter with them? Cause I love that. And I'm just like, so I'm always like, just. What, what issue, was it inappropriate, which, you know, cause I'm always talking to the teacher. And they send out, you know, like, this is what we're learning this month, this is what we're doing. And I look at his worksheets, when he's coming home and look with sight words and things like that, but. I don't know how every single household does that for a first grader. I don't know what that looks like for every single first grader. I'm sure in his classroom, that's not what it looks like for every other first grader. And so I, how, how do we get everyone, you know, I'm not saying that I'm doing it perfectly. I mean, I try my best, but like, you know, so. How do we get that? So it's easy and available for parents, for any kind of parent, you know?
So the data is for parenting cases differently. Um, and, and we've talked a lot about how for students, that education has to be a partnership between parent and teacher. So thank you for, for diving into that important point. Mississippi specifically created robust parent tools, um, to, uh, help. Parents, uh, uh, leverage literacy and, and, uh, read their students at home. Um, some states have developed and even deeper and created individualized reading plans for those students who are not actively proficient. I grade three, separate development partnership for parents and their parent commitment within those plans. Um, there, there are more, more programs that do work better.
Oh, how about like Minnesota, Wisconsin, Illinois, Kansas, Nebraska? What? They're not like midwestern states like Iowa. What, what, what are they doing? Where are they ranking in this? They, I, I assume they, and I could be wrong, but I assume they have kind of similar experience to us. Um, what can we glean from what they're doing or not? Or are they looking to us?
This, this is a start of a conversation. I think we've brought to you three really high profile states that had significant gains and. Have, uh, are further down the road in the implementation of the science of reading. But I guess, I think from this conversation, um, doing a midwestern state comparison could be helpful, uh, elevating, um. Some specific brand and as you can see, achievement gains, early implementation of science of reading, might be able to help inform the broad work as well. Uh, so those are great pieces of feedback.
You know, one thing we have working for today, we, we have teacher leaders in virtually, should, should be virtually every school in Iowa, right? We TLC, that's what TLC did. So we should have some of that structure in place to disseminate the information we want, right? I mean, that's what we, that's what we hire them for. How, uh, how across the board is that? Do all the elementary schools, do all the middle schools, do they have teacher leaders? Uh, and do they have that, that ability, uh, to work with their staff through someone like that?
Yeah, I think every school district is involved with a teacher leader compensation. Yeah. There's a lot of schools that I know. And I have kind of a short focus. I don't have a lot, but they do have reading coaches. They have instructional coaches.
And additionally, those leaders.
No.
Through the leadership, same person. Yeah, sure.
And maybe it fills the gaps for those who are more.
Well, that, that structure is there. Some of that structure is there.
Yeah, there, I don't think what we're doing in Iowa is all wrong. Can it be improved? Well, absolutely. She always looked to improve and for me, when I kind of strikes my. My background is that this is a big deal and we have to make sure that we're gonna be chasing. The right program down the road. And I'd say it's not the right program. But I would like, but Mary said, I'd like to know what schools are currently doing, especially those that have had some success. With closing achievement gaps or increasing proficiency. What are, what are our TLC coaches doing? Are they doing some of this or are they doing none of this? Cause if you're a doctor, you're diagnosing things, need to diagnose the system as well.
Maybe I can share something on that, um, if you don't mind. So I spent the last eleven years in a school district, seven of which I was the instructional coach there. And, um, I just joined the department this summer and the previous two years is when we started after the pandemic. Our scores were really struggling and our students were coming in much lower than we'd ever seen them before. And we needed to take immediate action and we did. We did not have two years to teach a course on the science of reading. I spent, um, summer offering financial reimbursement to teachers to come and attend a summer training. And then we, it was an intense summer training, then it was the entire next year where they would be implementing some of the practices. For our, for the building that I covered, which was a grade, uh, three, four building. Our biggest focus was on phonics. We, our teachers had never taught phonics before at a third and fourth grade level. And by simply making a few tweaks, we didn't change a curriculum program, we did supplement with some phonics materials. We were at approximately eighty five to eighty six percent proficiency of our students. Prior to that, we were in the fifty to sixties. So we had a huge increase by just making a few instructional tweaks that needed to be done. But that came about from our work and our understanding of the science of reading and how students learn to read. We were missing some major components because. People assume, oh, they get to third grade, they're, they're no longer learning to read, they're, um, reading to learn. And that was not happening. And I think that that's consistent across the state that we assume. That we don't need some of these, that we still don't need that explicit instruction, that we don't have to tell kids this, you know, vowel team says this. Or these letters together, this trigraph makes this sound, and they absolutely needed that. Um, so that's just, I know that's a very small example, um, but that happened over the course of about a year and a half that we saw such significant. Increases. And I know if we looked across the state, there are other districts that have done that as well. Um, but I think in terms of if we want to do this well, we want to go slow to, to see those increases. And so I know we can't get the funding for every teacher to do something over the summer and throughout the year. Uh, but that was a priority that the previous district I worked in made and they, they recognized that we needed that support. And that was something that we created funding for, found funding for.
I can share one other thought and kind of out of order in the context of the discussion, though. Um, one of the other things that I like in seeing all of this is not only are we focusing on. Improving reading scores, which is a top priority, but I love that we are investing in the teachers and skill building in the teachers, which I think is a. Side effect that doesn't always come through when you're looking at these pieces, but when we think about the challenges of. Keeping educators in the workforce, that this is an opportunity for them to be elevated as well and. Kind of thinking creatively and potentially a retention strategy as they can see and celebrate improvement in scores as well. So, um, wherever next steps in the model or however that goes, I think that's a component to think about as well. Is the impact this will have on teachers as their skills improve and as they see better outcomes in their students.
I mean, I need this, have the school do a self-assessment as part of where they are.
There'll be all kinds of adult stories about reading and reading skills and how, how they're developed. We have tried to say that after third grade, you know, we better know how to read. Uh, and if not, we're gonna retain you or we're gonna give you summertime instruction, maybe even below that, second grade, first grade. Let's get those kids in the summertime and let's use that. I hear these horror stories about people teaching these classes that don't have any. Like any, uh, really, uh, instruction on how to deal with the science of reading. They just are in there to give read, we're not teaching them the things that we can teach them. It's more than just looking at a book and read a book, right? I mean, I got you, but the people that are leading those programs need to have the instruction, structural methods to be effective. And, uh, I don't know why we're settling for that. Maybe that's the only person or the only person we could get to use our summers in that fashion. You, you guys know better than I do what the problem is there. But would you agree? Or not? Okay.
One more random question, and this is totally random as I put this out there. Again, as we consider shifting kind of into a different mode for approaching the science of reading. Is there some kind of component that could be developed and shared with nonprofit organizations that are supporting after school reading or reading buddy? Mentoring to help them understand those pieces as they're sitting with kids and helping them learn to read outside of school. I'm just thinking about that everybody went to Iowa and CIPOM and Big Brothers, Big Sisters. And all of those programs that are recruiting mentors from within the community who may be undoing. The work that, um, is happening to teach kids to read and doing great work as volunteers to spend time.
And parents too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Just for the general knowledge, this guy was educated in Mississippi. And my educational experience from grade one, that we didn't have any grade, the grade eight in Mississippi. Wow, it's a good thing I got to Iowa. What I did, yeah.
Okay, I guess we're down at this for another year.
Don't.
What, what are the, what's gonna happen now?
Yeah, that's my question. Where are you?
This is the beginning of, of a conversation. We wanted to make sure, um, that our expert team was able to provide, uh, the evidence on which they rely. And that we'll afford to continue the normalization throughout this strategic planning process and also throughout, uh, the rest of the year and know that we'll support it again.
Is there a timeline for any, like when our B process and stuff like that could be done?
So we hope, um, for professional development as soon as possible.
Okay.
Um, and, and hope to have an update soon.
And we do have one item left on our agenda. That's the December fourth meeting. We know what time that is. December fourth, um, two to four. I'll need a.
That's virtual, right?
That's virtual. I'll need a, a motion to approve that start of meeting day on our calendar.
So.
They're moved a second to this other discussion. Hearing them, those in favor of the business, hang on.
Hi.
Opposed. Same time. Hearing December fourth, two to four P M. Stay tuned for more improvement as it gets closer to the day. Is there any other business?
We don't meet on October, it's November now.
Then you November and then December.
That's where this meeting on October.
Mikey does it.
There are no other businesses. Here, John, and let's take a break. Let's be back here at, uh.